Welcome to the Falls Church City Council, our regular meeting. We are delighted to have you all with us. And if I could, I'd ask you to please rise, wherever you might be, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe we're going to have the flag displayed on the screen. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
All right. Well, let's get that up there and we can all rise and have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Where'd they go?
Is that forthcoming?
Yes, sir. Sorry for the delay, Mayor.
All right. All right, there we go. So I'm going to go ahead and lead us, but if you could all say it, wherever you might be, including our public. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
To the flag of the United States
Of the United States of America And to the republic For which it stands, One nation, under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll and whatever you might need to do statutorily for our electronic meeting?
Yes, I am just calling the roll this evening, and we are obviously having a virtual meeting, but under all applicable FOIA laws. We do also have public hearings tonight for the budget. And so if anybody has comments, you can email them to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. That's cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. And we will be checking those until the budget public hearing is over and relaying those to council. So I'll be doing the roll call. Ms. Conley?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Ms. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Littenhouse?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Z?
Here.
And Mayor Charter?
Here.
Thank you, council.
All right. Thank you so much. Next up, we're going to move for an adoption of the meeting agenda. Would anyone like to make such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. All right. So the first order of business on tonight's agenda is a presentation from the NVTA, the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. And we are delighted to have at least two guests electronically from NVTA. Keith Jasper, who's a principal planner, and Mike Longy, who is the chief financial officer. So welcome to you both. I know some of our city council members work very closely with NVTA. Mr. Snyder, Mr. Duncan, and others. So welcome to you both, and thank you for coming out electronically, at least. We appreciate all your fine work. Mr. Shields, did you have anything you wanted to say to introduce this matter? Anyone from staff, Falls Church staff?
Sorry, Mayor Charter, I was unmuting my phone. Cindy Mester is on the call, and Carrie Odenino is also on this meeting. And I would defer to them for an introductory to this item. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ladies. Either one or both of you have anything to say by way of introduction?
Thank you, Mayor. Carrie, would you like to take the lead this evening?
So council has seen the press release that went out a couple of weeks ago related to the NVTA grant program. The city submitted two applications as part of the NVTA fiscal year 2024-2025 Call for Projects. The West Falls Church Access to Transit and Multimodal Connectivity Project and the Downtown Falls Church Multimodal Improvements Project. These applications were endorsed by council at the November 12, 2019, regular meeting. The public comment period for the six-year program update is now open until May 24 at 11:59 p.m., with a public hearing this Thursday, May 14. And so now, Cindy, if you don't have anything else, I will turn it over to Mr. Jasper.
That's fine, Carrie. I just want to add for Keith and Mike's benefit, just let me know when you want me to advance your slides.
Thank you very much, Cindy and Mayor Charter and members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Let me just check that you can hear me, okay?
We can. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'll go first, and Mr. Longy will follow me shortly. If you could advance to the next slide, please. Thank you. So I just want to cover four topics fairly briefly tonight. So starting with the context, if you could go to the next slide, please.
There's just a slight delay.
Okay, got it. So NVTA has, as I'm sure many of you know already, has two primary responsibilities to develop and update the long-range multimodal transportation plan for Northern Virginia, which we call transaction. It's updated every five years. And in fact, we have recently kicked off the next update to transaction. So we've got a couple of things going on in parallel here. And our second primary responsibility is to prioritize and fund regional transportation projects through our six-year program. Our inaugural six-year program was adopted in June of 2018. So this is the first update to that six-year program. Next slide, please. So these two primary responsibilities are shown in this rather complex process chart. In the planning column on the left, you see transaction towards the bottom, our long-range plan, in a gray box. In the central column, under programming, you see our six-year program towards the bottom. And also, on the right-hand side, the funding column, you'll note that you actually have to read this from the bottom up. So just up from the bottom, you see 70% regional revenue. And that's the revenue that is used through our six-year programming process towards the funding of projects. And the key thing here really is the transaction and our six-year program are not just our primary responsibilities, they're very closely linked. In short, we cannot use our regional revenues to fund projects in our six-year program if those projects are not already included in our transaction long-range plan. So while the plan looks out 25 years, its relevance is immediate when it comes to funding programs. Next slide, please. Very briefly, the purpose of this slide is the number in the bottom right-hand corner, 36%. This is the ratio of what we expect to be the approved amount of funding to the requested amount of funding. And at 36%, this is going to be the most competitive program, funding program we've ever had. We've had four previous programs, and together they've averaged an approval to requested ratio of 55%. We're going to be significantly lower than that. The $522 million that you see under amount approved for the fiscal 2025 to 20... Sorry, fiscal 2020 to 25 program is actually not yet approved. That is subject to authority action this Thursday evening. And the amount requested that we are considering is $1.44 billion. Next slide, please. Okay. What we see here are three pie charts. On the left, the candidate... These all represent the candidate projects. On the left, we see the number of applications. In total, we're looking at 41 projects. And in the box below that, you see the two candidate projects from the city that Carrie mentioned earlier. The majority of projects, the 21 shown in the dark blue shade, are roadway projects. The city's two projects are categorized as bicycle and pedestrian, and these projects are shown in the green slice of the pie. We have eight applications for bike pedal projects this cycle. The central pie is showing the dollar amount requested associated with each of the modes. And the right-hand side is the dollar amount representing the total project cost of the 41 projects that we're evaluating. Now, you see the total project cost for the city projects is 17.44 million, and the requested amount is 15.2 million. Next slide, please. The project selection process that we use is consistent with previous cycles, with some small enhancements this cycle. But essentially, our project selection process has four key components. The first one is eligibility, for which, as I've already mentioned, inclusion in transaction is the major eligibility bar that applicants have to cross. The second component is quantitative analysis, and these are outputs that rely on the use of a simulation model for us to come up with this analysis. The qualitative analysis, there are a lot of points that we look at under qualitative. This is not to say they are subjective. They are all objective, and there is a certain amount of analysis, numerical analysis behind them. But we tend to use more of a grading structure than a precise numerical structure when we look at qualitative analysis. And then the fourth of the key components is the public comment, which is in process right now. I would say for under quantitative analysis, the congestion reduction relative to cost, or CRRC ratios, as shown here, is really the starting point for how we look at the projects. And in our analysis, we rank projects from first to 41st, in this case, based on how well each project performs under the CRRC ratio. And the city's two projects rank 17th and 19th out of 41, respectively. Next slide, please. Okay. So there are not many next steps left in this process, which started in early July of last year. Carrie has already mentioned the authority is hosting a public hearing this Thursday, and that will actually be followed by an authority meeting, a regular authority meeting, at which the authority will be taking action to hopefully approve the available pay-go amount, the $522 million I mentioned earlier. 10 days after the public hearing, the public comment period will end, and then we will summarize the public comments and rapidly pivot into June through our committees with a release of the NVTA staff recommendations, which incorporates all the analysis and the public comment summary. And then if we stick to schedule, the authority will adopt the six-year program at its meeting in July. Just a few next steps here. After the six-year program is adopted, essentially, we go through a number of contract administration steps. The key thing to remember here is we are allocating revenues that we will be receiving in fiscal years '24 and '25. Obviously, fiscal year '24 begins on July 1 of 2023. And we start allocating the money through the annual appropriation process, which, in the case of fiscal year '24 revenues, will be approximately April, May of 2023. So about three years from now, the projects that are approved for funding will begin the process of appropriation, and then those projects will be able to draw down those funds. I think I'll pause there. I think I've got one more slide with some information for any city residents or council members who wish to submit comments. We do have a link on the next slide which shows where to go to, how to submit those comments. And we hope to hear more through that process, and I'll be... Cindy, I'm not sure whether you want Mike to go next, or whether you want to pause for questions at this point.
I think if it's all right with the mayor, we'll go ahead and have Mike Longy present. And so let me switch over to that presentation. And as Mike does that, this will give us an update on the revenue projections and the funding that will tie into this award, as well as provide some information on the projections that NVTA did for COVID-19 impact, which is really important to the 70% money, as well as the city's 30%. So I will now pass it over to Mike Longy. And if you have a webcam and want to switch to the video so the council and the community can see you, that would be great.
I'm sorry, Cindy. Am I not showing up on the camera?
Now you are. Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Mayor and city council, for inviting this presentation. I have been known to get a little excited about these numbers. You have staff reports attached to your dispatch package. I will not go through all of those. This presentation takes the tables from those reports, and basically, I'll talk through a series of tables with you. Obviously, happy to respond to any questions, either as we go through or at the end. But there is a significant amount of detail that I will briefly mention as we work through the tables, and I'll mention where you can find them in the staff report. So Cindy, if we could move to the next slide? Okay. Table 1 shows the revised revenue estimates for fiscal '20 through '23, and then the proposed revenue estimates for '24 and '25. These six years, we are revising, obviously, '20, '23 because of COVID, but also because you can see in the chart there that we have new revenue streams coming in from General Assembly action. So we'll work through the tables. It'll show what the COVID impact is on those and what the General Assembly brought to us. Look at this. At this point, it is the gross revenue. As we get towards the end of the tables, we'll come up to what we call the pay-go, which is the money that's actually available to fund projects. That's the $522 million. The Finance Committee took action Friday of last week, so this is very current, to recommend adoption to the authority, as Keith had mentioned, Thursday this week. So this will be in front of Councilmember Snyder as a NVTA board member and his colleagues for action on Thursday. So Table 2, you can look and see where we made reductions in sales tax, as you can tell the red numbers, for COVID-19. We're expecting that impact to last three years, basically. We also have the internet sales tax coming in, which fortunately, that started this year. The state does not give us a breakout of internet sales tax by itself. So basically, we took the very large jump in sales tax revenue, subtracted out the amount of increase that we had anticipated for the year, because we've been pretty accurate with that in the past, and credit the difference to internet sales tax. One thing to remember with NVTA sales tax is it does not apply to food and beverages for human consumption. So we are not losing money with restaurants being closed, nor are we getting a bump from grocery stores, people moving from restaurants to grocery stores to feed themselves. We can move to the next slide, Cindy? Okay. These two tables represent two of the new revenue streams coming in. In the 2019 General Assembly took action to give us what everybody refers to as the I-81 corridor funds. This is a package of funds that's predominantly meant to improve Interstate 81, but also made some other interstate revenue sources available. And this was the first step in restoration for the authority. This is a rather complex history with this item, because VDOT's first estimates were that the authority would get $10 million in fiscal '20, and that would grow to approximately $20 million in '22 and '23. And it's pretty stable from there. The long-term projections for it have been pretty stable. Unfortunately, after some questions that arose from the authority, because we just didn't see the revenue materializing, VDOT came in with the second round of projections. And as you can see, they made significant reductions, 64% to 44% in their projections. NVTA, our estimate is based on the actual receipts plus the increases that the state had projected, because we are still not seeing the money arriving at the point to fulfill the state's estimations. So this table also shows the difference from the first revenue estimate and the difference from the second revenue estimate. And I'll go into those in a little more detail in a later slide. Those basically are showing, you know, what the General Assembly thought we were going to get versus what we're actually, looks like we're going to get. We then made a reduction for COVID-19. That shows in the dollar amounts and the percentages. These funds are effectively generated by large tractor-trailers in interstate commerce. And one of the research tools that we use, that's outlined in the staff report, noted that in a one-week period, freight traffic dropped 70%. And you would think that with all the deliveries going on, there would be a lot more traffic, or at least some sustaining of that traffic. But that just shows you how important it is for raw materials to get to factories and finished products to leave factories, whether they are assembled or whether they're agricultural-based. That's the hit that you're seeing. We look at this impact ending in '22 kind of sharply, because coming back from a recession, freight traffic should pick up pretty quickly at that point. Table 4 shows grantor's tax. This is taxes on deeds through your county courthouses. On this revenue projection, we had a fairly long history that we were able to rely on to make these projections. This is kind of the re-establishment of a tax. We had this before the Womata funding bill went through. So this was a 2020 General Assembly session. Our estimate for this revenue and the state's for fiscal '21 were the same at $30 million. What you see is the governor has phased in the implementation of this tax by about six months, which cuts that in half. In addition to that, we are taking another COVID-19 reduction to that revenue, based on the information that we've gotten from the Northern Virginia Association of Realtors and the other economic data points that, again, are outlined in the first staff report. So we show COVID net of... Grantor's tax net of COVID, you can see a pretty significant reduction in fiscal '21, less so, but still substantial in '22 and '23. And next slide, Cindy? Okay. On these slides, what we're doing is showing a combination of restoration, and we're getting to that number that actually everybody's really interested in, which is the pay-go. You can see that the revenues for the I-81, the grantors, the Northern Virginia Transportation District Fund, and excuse me, we didn't put a table in for that one, because that is a direct fund-to-fund transfer on the books of the Commonwealth. There is not a tax rate assigned to it. It's coming out of the state's coppers. It's a flat $20 million, so it won't grow. And actually, as we all know, it'll be worth a little less each year. But it still came in with the 2020 General Assembly session, effective in '21, and has no COVID-19 impact. One of the important things with this table is you'll see the VDOT estimated impact. Now, VDOT did not give us revised numbers for FY 2020. So we went off their first estimate, and you can see the reductions that were in that earlier chart. Those estimation changes have a net reduction in revenue of 47.8. COVID-19, on all of the new revenue sources, which is obviously the I-81 and the grantors, you can see it's that $21 million in FY '21 because of the one half-year delay, only had an impact of $40 million. And if you think back to the second chart in sequence, we looked at the sales tax being reduced about $200 million. So how did we end up with... Because we were originally projecting that there would be $400 million available in pay-go for the six-year program. How did we go from $400 million projected, absorb those losses, and still come up with $522 million? The second staff report, the one that's listed as pay-go, goes into some details about some of the very cautious practices that we've used in the past. The authority staff is very cognizant of the fact that all of the projects approved by the authority are regional, meaning they cross jurisdictions, but they come from jurisdictions. And so were we to ever miss and not have enough money to pay for the projects, it would actually be the region having to sit down and figure out which jurisdiction within the region was not going to get the project. So we've tried to avoid that at all costs. We have worked with the Chair of the Finance Committee, Mayor Parrish, and other members of the Finance Committee, to come up with an approach that was a little bit more aggressive, yet still respectful of the fact that we don't ever want to come up short. And when I was talking to Cindy Mester, your deputy city manager, I was struggling with the words for how to describe this approach, because it's a lot less conservative than in the past, but I think it's still very responsible. And Cindy came up with the term reasonable and responsive. So I kind of liked that, and I told her I was going to use it with attribution. And the... One of the things you see here is obviously the net dollar amount, that is pay-go, for 2020 through '23, because of course, we had to absorb these losses and sustain the existing 18- to 23-year, six-year program. We've been able to do that. We've also asked permission for the Finance Committee to use a projected carryover rather than audited carryover. There is a couple of other measures in the pay-go staff report that shows how we've brought more money to the table. Yet, at the same time, we list the risk mitigation factors that we think will allow us to, even if our estimates are wrong, and the economy ends up performing worse, we still think we can absorb a good amount of downside, while at the same time, being able to bring over half a billion dollars to projects in Northern Virginia. We are acutely aware that at any time in the authority's relatively short period of having funding, now is probably the most critical time to get as many resources as we can into transportation infrastructure in all sources, in all styles, all modes, to help the economy, help employment, and generally, keep the region moving forward. And with that, I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Mayor, if I could, as we pass the baton back to council for questions, I would just like to note that NVTA went through the financial details thoroughly with Karen Bawa, Melissa Reiman, Carrie Odeno, and myself, which is very helpful, because it also helps us understand how to use that same methodology for the calculation of the 30%. And that will translate into an update to the CIP, to make sure that we're funding the transportation projects that we had planned to in the March 9 proposed budget from the city manager accurately when we present the CIP to council for first reading on May 26. So this was a helpful exercise for staff, and it gives you the same foundation for the CIP that you'll see on the 26. So Mayor, back to you for council comments and questions.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you both from NVTA. We appreciate all your fine work. I want to go ahead and start with Mr. Snyder and see if you have any comments as to what we've heard tonight or anything else we ought to be aware of. Mr. Snyder?
Sure. First of all, to the NVTA
First of all, to the MVTAs staff, thank you very much. And Monica Backman, the Executive Director, you do amazing work. And I think we're all dealing with the financial fallout from COVID-19. Do you have a sense about what the city's total projects to date have been? I know we had the original Haycock Road project for, I think it was 15 million. Do you have a rough idea about our funding so far?
Yes, Mr. Snyder, I can address that. I think through our fiscal 2014 program, the city had three projects. And if I recall, that was, they totaled about 1.2 million. And as you mentioned, the West Falls Church campus project is 15.7 million. And although this is not a city project directly, the Nova Parks have an enhanced regional bike routes project on the WOD trail through the city for $3.2 million.
I think it's important to keep in mind, the city has benefited from this, and I know Cindy and the entire transportation staff has worked hard on it, and I've worked hard on as a board to deliver for the city. Let me turn to a more regional analysis here for a minute. What's the total estimated cost of COVID-19? If you add it all together, now, I know you've done various things to try to cover those costs, to fill in gaps, but what's the estimated total cost of COVID-19 at this point to NVTAs revenues?
Councilmember Snyder, we're absorbing about 240 million in costs.
Over what year period?
Mostly 2020 to '22. Some does go into '23. And we have, excuse me, we have basically reduced, lowered revenue projections because when you reduce revenues at this level, it takes you years, in fact, to actually get back to growing from where you started from. That amount is not in the 240 million. So the 240 million would be much higher if one were to include the lack of growth.
So this pandemic, for this, just this one regional agency alone, has caught, will and is costing a projected 240 million dollars.
Yes.
That's the bottom. I just wanted to get some sense of the financial and economic impact of this thing, just to Northern Virginia Transportation Authority funding and projects. Okay, thank you very much. And we will do everything we can under these circumstances to continue to deliver for Northern Virginia. But the challenges presented by the pandemic and the reaction to the pandemic, I think you've just heard the quantification. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. And just for the public's edification, Carrie, could you describe the two projects that were mentioned earlier, just for the benefit of the public? I don't know if you're still on the line. Maybe it's muted. Or maybe I'll just turn it back to the folks at NVTAs, maybe Mr. Jasper. Could you describe the two Falls Church projects that are currently pending, or under consideration?
Yes, let me, let me just look up something for you, just to walk you through. So there are two projects. The West Falls Church Access to Transit and Multimodal Connectivity Project is in the same location as the 15.7 million-dollar project that Mr. Snyder mentioned briefly just now. And this project is looking to provide an enhanced pedestrian connection between the WOD trail and Route 7 in the Haycock Road area. So that provides another way to access that development. And I think also, in the Shreve Road area, has had a number of issues in the past, which perhaps this project will help with a little. The second project, the Downtown Falls Church Multimodal Improvements Project, looks to improve sidewalks and crossings generally along Park Avenue in the downtown area. So, and then a couple of cross streets as well, where there'll be some improvements.
Thank you. And just for...
I was just going to note, Mayor, apologies from Carrie. She lost internet, and she's trying to reconnect. And the council packet, as well as what's posted on Granicus, describes both of those projects, along with a graphic that gives you a visual.
Sure. Well, I just want to make sure the folks watching on television will be able to understand it as well. I don't think they'll have as easy access to some of the materials we have. And then let me ask if, given the shortfall, what are your opinions as to whether either of these projects will get funded?
I mean, we want to wait for the public comment period to play out before releasing any recommendations. As I mentioned earlier, it's really competitive. Both the projects scored reasonably well. So I think both of the projects were actually ranked higher than where we would draw the line as we go down the ranked list using those congestion reduction relative to cost ratios. I think the 522 million would run out a couple of projects below both of the city's projects. So I mean, it would be inappropriate for me to kind of speculate as to one or other of the projects would get funded, but they're reasonably in the competitive range.
Great, thank you. That's all I'm seeking, and I don't want to put you on the spot. Let me open it up to questions or comments from others. Does anyone else on council have a question or comment?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Of course, Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thank you for that presentation. And I'm wondering if we can go back to Mr. Jasper's slides, the one that had the three pie charts?
Sure, I'll load it up.
On that chart, you had the slice that was green and that showed the transit and bike projects that you said ours fell under. And I'm just wondering, in the competition, are we just competing against the ones in the green section? Does that help us at all?
That's a very perceptive question. Thank you for asking. Unfortunately, the answer to that question is no. We apply the same process to all projects, and the purpose of showing those green slices was just to help understand the sorts of projects that we're evaluating. Obviously, we, other than the eligibility that the projects have to be in transaction, the decision as to which projects are submitted to us is on member jurisdictions like yourselves and other eligible regional agencies. But the way we have to evaluate this is one process across all types of projects. We don't have any set-asides or anything like that in our process.
Okay. So really, the best thing that we have going for us now as a city is if a lot of community members provide public comment.
The authority is always interested to hear public comment, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I've got a quick question.
Sure, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep. Keith, Mike, thank you guys for the presentation. Following onto the Vice Mayor's comment there, is there anything else that we can be doing as an elected body, as a city, to help improve those chances? Obviously, the public comments, but is there anything else that we can be doing to make sure that we compete for the meager dollars that are out there right now?
Well, I don't unfairly coach one jurisdiction over another, but...
Please do.
The public hearing is coming up on Thursday this week, and the comment period is open. So if the council as a body or individual members of the council wish to either testify or to submit a comment, then I mean, that's all I can really suggest. But I think a number of, I assume, city residents, certainly members of the public who support the city's applications have made that known to us.
Okay. I know Councilman Snyder is all over that. We've been well represented there, and so I'm sure that we'll also get the public comment train geared up full steam. So thank you guys again.
You're welcome.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Of course you can. Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for joining us. I think this is a question for Keith. It's a long thought, but I'll try to make it a short question. As you gauge the impact of the COVID situation, obviously, the dollar figure you've attached to it, there is a quarter billion dollars, but sort of on the other side of it, what does it, even if it's a very early impression, what does it lead you to think about the future of transportation in our region? And just to take one example, the article in the paper today referring to, you know, the standard load for a metro car is going to drop from 100 people to 20 people during however long it is that we are going to be observing social distancing. I mean, as you're making decisions about funding in the here and now, how has the changed world affected the deliberation over those decisions?
Mr. Duncan, again, excellent question. We've been thinking about it a lot. I would say that as far as this particular funding cycle was, we're pretty close to the end of it. I don't think, you know, those thoughts will play into our recommendations and the authority's decision-making, although I can't speak for the authority. But I think where it really is going to have a big impact is, I mentioned earlier, we're just ramping up the next update to our long-range plan. I think as we begin to move through that process, the pandemic's effect on transportation in so many different ways is something that we certainly can't ignore. We obviously can't say, you know, that's the situation that we're going to be looking at in 25 years from now, which is the long-range plan horizon. But I think we certainly will want to look at some scenario or sensitivity analysis. And indeed, on the authority's agenda for this upcoming meeting on Thursday evening is a small task request for which we're seeking authority approval to undertake some supplementary modeling in the very near future so that we can begin to understand a little bit better the sorts of situations you talked about with metro, with reduced utilization. But we're also talking to the business community about how they feel about back-to-work, work-from-home, reduced utilization in offices as well. And I think that kind of discussion is really helping to inform us. In the event that people are reluctant to go back to transit or are indeed told not to go back to transit, are they going to go back to driving? Or is there some way in which we can work with the business community to maybe encourage the work-from-home arrangements where they actually are working for the mutual benefit of the employer, the employee, and the regional economy, as well as congestion? Then there may be some new options there that we had not even recognized three months ago.
Good, okay, thank you. That obviously would be helpful for the city as we plan our future at the West Falls Church Metro especially. So we look forward to that. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Let's see. Let me just see. I just got a text here. All right. I don't know if Mr. Lichtenhouse had any other comments.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, it was, it's one question, maybe after our guests leave, but I would just like to talk about the potential impact. Maybe this is a conversation for another meeting, the potential impact of losing that West End money and how that affects the mechanics of our deal on the West End up there, because that was, I wouldn't say a critical piece, but certainly an important piece to the vision of what's happening on the West End site.
All right, thank you. So is there, are there other, that's something certainly that we should be discussing and contemplating, maybe just not at this immediate time with our guests here. Are there any other questions for our friends from NVTAs?
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder?
Yes, of course.
Sure. Two quick things. First of all, while I'm thinking about it, we ought to have business done on the agenda and talk about potentially sending a letter, another one if we haven't done one recently in support of the project. So that's for future discussion in this meeting. And I know that NVTAs has an outstanding initiative on applying new technology. And Keith, I wonder if you could just give a quick summary of where we are on that initiative?
Yes, Mr. Snyder, thank you. Mr. Snyder actually is the Chair of a relatively recently-formed MBTA Committee, the Transportation Technology Committee, which is an advisory committee to Monica Backman, our Executive Director. And Monica instigated that committee because she really felt that the authority needed some really strong external advice, both from people on the government side, people on the private sector side, national associations and so on, of which we have a lot in this region, but people who are experts in this field where the authority has not traditionally been a strong player. And so this committee is working on, it's helping us to develop a strategic plan for transportation technology covering Northern Virginia with a specific objective to understand what MBTA's role should be in various strategies that are related to technology. And of course, for any particular role, there could be actually multiple roles from being a leader, funder, champion legislative, or just simply observing things that we recognize we can't influence, but we feel that we need to monitor and share information on. So MBTA staff have prepared some draft strategies. And, you know, in the very near future, we'll be sharing these draft strategies back with the members of the Transportation Technology Committee, and then through our other committees subsequently. And this strategic plan for transportation technology will also become a critical input to the next update to our long-range plan, but also continue to exist in parallel, particularly in areas where there may be some policy guidance that the authority asks us to develop. These are things that we're looking at within the strategic plan. So there'll be more coming up on this in the very near future, certainly before the summer.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Are there any last words before we let our friends from NVTAs head on with other business this evening? Anything else? Well, with that, I'll just thank both of you, Mr. Jasper and Mr. Longy, for coming together with us electronically this evening, and thank you for your fine work in these difficult times.
Great. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. That's another presentation, which is an update on our General Assembly session. And so I'm going to ask Mr. Shields and Ms. Messner to go forward with that.
Thank you, Mayor Charter. I'll start by just by saying a few words about the work we've been doing with the, all of the representatives that... representatives that.
Since I'm sharing, I can't see his presentation. Looked like he lost internet for a second.
I'm going to go ahead and send him a text. Sometimes you keep talking after you think you don't know you're not on the phone anymore, and next thing you know, you ramble on. So I'm going to go ahead and, I think, send him a text right now and see if we can get him back on board for us. So.
While you do that, Mayor, would you like me to go ahead and start with the legislative program and then we can incorporate in Mr. Shields?
Yeah.
So the item that's before you tonight, Council, is a 2020 General Assembly Legislative Post Briefing. This is an item that Council has requested that we do following each General Assembly session, and we were able to restore doing that last session. And so we have the opportunity to present that to you this evening. This is to help us have input from you all as we prepare for future General Assembly sessions and, in particular, the specialist session that we anticipate in this fall when the General Assembly will reconvene after revenues are reforecasted as a result of COVID-19 as we've talked. With the budget that was adopted, a lot of the new initiatives and funding, including the $2 million for affordable housing, had to be unallocated and put in a pot of money due to the revenue drops. And so there'll be follow-up in the fall. And so we, of course, welcome Council's input now and as we go through the tracking of legislation, federal at state level. And so staff will continue to coordinate with the Legislative Committee and convene meetings as appropriate related to that. This staff report particularly is a highlight of key bills that are consistent with Council's legislative program, and certainly does not attempt to cover all 4,000 bills that were part of last General Assembly session. And indeed, all the details are not included. So the staff report will provide or does provide the link to the General Assembly's legislative information system so Council and the public can do additional research as needed. Quite a few bills were passed, as you'll see in the executive summary and the full attachment one. Staff is currently working and reviewing that legislation so that we are pursuing the ones that will be effective July 1 and where we need to address changes to the city code, we can follow up on that. So various departments are very active in that as well as coordinating with the city attorney. One in particular that I called out in the staff report is the work being done on the seven bills related, key seven bills, there was quite a few, but the seven key ones that relate to dangerous weapons that the chief is leading a task force on to implement, whether the red flag laws, private gun sale laws, felony and the age limits, and as it relates to city government operations and our public facilities and land, the ability with some constraints and requirements to control weapons being brought onto public property and land. So those are some work staff will continue to do between now and legislation, many of which will take Council action when the bills become effective July 1. As I turn it over to go a little bit more detail on the executive summary of the report, I want to thank in particular Benjamin Tarilla, who's a junior at George Mason High School, had reached out to the city to do an internship and so has signed up to work with City Manager's office and me in particular on the legislative endeavor. So this report that's brought to you this evening is solely due to the good work and research that he's done that allowed us to have the time to work on this and bring such a thorough report to you. It, of course, became a challenging internship because we didn't get to meet in person. We had two meetings and then we had to switch to Skype, email, phone calls as we were all stay-at-home to be safe and as he switched to online education classes. So it did a lot of good work on flexibility, adaptability, and time management as well as learning from ground zero what does a Dillon Rule state in Virginia legislation mean to a local city where you live. So Benjamin had done a great work, a lot of research, as you can see from the report that's before you. So I'm going to pause for a moment and see if Mr. Shields was able to rejoin and wants to make his comments.
Well, thank you, Ms. Messer. I was just going to note how much work has been done by members of the city council and members of staff. We've been meeting with our state delegates, our federal delegates, and it's been, you know, through this pandemic, the amount of communication that's happened between jurisdictions and also with our state government and our federal government has been tremendous. And so we really wanted to get this legislative report to the city council as quickly as possible so that you had this information as we continue that very high level of interaction with our Senator Kane, Senator Warner, our state Senator Dick Sasslaw, and our state delegate Marcus Simon, and frequently in the last couple of weeks with Governor Northam. So that's a bit of context for this year's report. Thank you.
And with that, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Benjamin for a few minutes to give you a highlight of just some of the key things out of the executive summary that he put together and then, of course, as backed by about 30 more pages on legislation. So Benjamin, would you like to proceed with your highlight?
Yes, please. Thank you, city, for having me. This year, it was, there was a significant amount more bills passed that were related to the city's legislative agenda than in previous years. Obviously, as Ms. Messer noted, this report does not outline the 4,000-plus bills that were proposed in this session, but this attempts to cover a number of them that were important. And so, as you can see, the first, I believe, five pages or so are the executive summary, and that provides a short outline of each category that the city believed was important and a few more regarding the attachments to the legislative agenda, like VML, MBTA, et cetera. And so there's also, after the five pages, if you could scroll down, Ms. Messer, please.
Certainly.
When you get into the meat of the document, that's going to be the, the first category would be public safety, and that's mostly relating to dangerous weapons. And you'll see in the table that it's organized by, oh, yeah, it's organized by bill number in bold, for example, House Bill 9 there. And then you have the title of the bill, firearms reporting those lost or stolen, civil penalty. And then you have the summary of the bill that was, you can find on the LIS website that is linked in the document. And lastly, you have the status on the right. And so you have pass or fail. And so I hope to make this a little bit more readable. As you can see, some of the summaries are still kind of lengthy, but we tried to shorten them a bit. And so, yeah, above those tables, a little reminder of the position again. And so if you could scroll back up again, I guess I will just highlight a few things, some important things that were the outcome of this session.
I've scrolled back. It's just a little bit of a lag.
Okay, understandable. So, for example, as Ms. Messer highlighted, in the public safety section, there was a considerable amount of progress this year. For example, most of the bills that were proposed passed. So the concepts were extending background checks to currently exempted private gun sales, requiring gun owners to report the loss of a firearm within 24 hours, creating an extreme-risk protective order, also known as a red flag order, which allows law enforcement to temporarily seize firearms from otherwise lawful owners accused of presenting a risk of harm to themselves or others, returning to a pre-2012 policy, limiting the number of handguns allowed for an individual to purchase to one per month, increasing the restrictions barring a person to access a firearm while subject to a protective order, extending the power to local governments to create additional gun control measures on the community level, and making it a felony to leave a firearm accessible to anyone under the age of 18 up from the current age of 14. So what this does essentially, and most, the part that most relates to the city's agenda, is the increased authority to localities to create gun control measures. So, for example, localities can now adopt ordinances to ensure public safety of the community on, for example, most importantly, publicly-owned facilities and land. So this can include community centers and government buildings, et cetera. And, yeah, moving on to, I'm sorry for hopping around here, but I think you could scroll down to the solar freedom bill, which I believe would be on line 64.
Thank you for the line number.
And so an attempt in 2019 to pass the solar freedom bill in the 2019 General Assembly failed, and a version was carried over into 2020, and this one passed with many of the provisions of the 2019 version also going along with it. And an important one to highlight would be the lifting of the 1% cap on the total amount of solar energy that can be connected to the grid via net metering arrangements. That was one of the most important goals of the 2019 bill, and this passed. Next, we have also, this relates to the environment as well, but also to energy production. So the Virginia Clean Economy Act, I believe it was called, that, I'm not exactly sure where the line number is. I think it might be, well, in the summary, it would be under environment. And that essentially requires by 2050 for Virginia to rely on 100% renewable energy. And so in the summaries below, in the tables, you'll find a notice just redirecting you to the LIS website because also outlining a few of the short provisions because the short summary was, in fact, many, many lines long. So I thought for the benefit of the document, to just redirect you there. But it's a very detailed piece of legislation, and I recommend you look into that. Next, there, oh, in relation to stormwater, which would be on line 68, stormwater funding. In the legislative agenda, there was an outline for funding to the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund. And upon further research, there was a request of, I think, $180 million annually, I believe so, and, or, I think it was annually. And in the initial version of the budget, this amount was allocated, but as amendments went through and also with the current crisis, that amount was reduced to $50 million for the first year and none for the second year. But take into account, any references to the budget are likely to be taken with a grain of salt because of the current crisis going on right now. Next, there was also significant action on measures relating to equality. So if you could scroll up, please, to line 41, the ERA amendment ratification. This year, the General Assembly, as you probably know, passed legislation that would ratify the ERA, making Virginia the 38th state to ratify the ERA. And also, on line 36, there was also some action on fair housing and discrimination. And the bill that was passed in particular related to a prohibition on discrimination on the basis of income, which was something highlighted in the legislative program of the city, and that passed. And that's, there's much, much more in there, but that's a short summary of what was passed. And, yeah, I guess I'll turn it over to Ms. Messer.
All right. Well, listen, thank you so much, Ben. And your last name is Tarilla? Is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah, yeah, it's difficult. I had to tell Cindy how to pronounce it before this, just so we didn't have any mishaps, but I'm used to it. I don't mind it anymore.
And you're a junior at George Mason, correct?
Yes, yeah.
We did a great presentation. You're very articulate and very thorough and did a fantastic summary of a very complicated subject, so we really appreciate it. Very nice job.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Tarilla or Ms. Messer or Mr. Shields about the legislative program?
Mayor, I did.
All right, Ms. Hardy.
Great. Well, first of all, Benjamin, nice job. I had actually read the summary before reading the staff report, realizing that I was an intern. I was actually really impressed by the quality of it, so I'll echo what the mayor said. Really nice work. I think you picked a really excellent year to be an intern for us because the General Assembly certainly passed more interesting legislation than normal. I did have a couple of questions for either Mr. Shields or Ms. Messer, so I'm going to start with the guns one. I noted that, I think Ms. Messer mentioned at the beginning that there was going to be a work group that Chief Gavin was going to head up to develop recommendations for the city council. If I could just make a request to make sure that we think about coordinating with the region on that one. I think for that one especially makes sense, given reciprocity agreements and just having consistency on where we might want to ban firearms if we universally decide across Northern Virginia that we don't want them in libraries. I think it's easier for the public to understand that. So I'd love to have the task group work regionally and then come back with those recommendations.
Certainly, we can pass that on to the chief.
Great. And then while we're still on public safety, I also noted in the report, there was something that was passed around clarifying that cars must yield to pedestrians. Do we know if that gives us extra teeth for enforcement or is it just clarifies that, you know, in a crosswalk, pedestrians have the right of way and it's what we already can do?
It gives a little bit more enforcement because now it's clear that cars have to stop when yielding to somebody in a crosswalk versus just yielding and doing a slow roll. And also specifically precludes somebody from jumping ahead of a car who stopped to yield. So I think it will give some more enforcement, a little bit more clarity as to what the intent is when the pedestrian's in a crosswalk. It, however, does not require a car to stop for a pedestrian in a crosswalk. It's just stopping to the yield anyway, but some improvement.
Okay. That continues to be a concern I hear from our residents. While there's less cars on the road these days and there's more pedestrians, so I think the interaction between cars and pedestrians in crosswalks still seems to happen fairly frequently. And so that gives us extra enforcement when this is official. I think that would be helpful. Last one on public safety, speed cameras. Did that pass in the General Assembly?
It did pass, but with limited areas in which speed cameras can be used, so it's not a general speeding on roads. It's around construction. So it's not a general speeding on roads, it's around construction zones and school zones.
So given that we've got limited size and four schools around, it's worth thinking about, especially as we think about our budgets being reduced, if that would help us with enforcement and free up police officers elsewhere. I know we've talked about it in the past, but that would be something I would support.
It does still require, as the school bus and the red light, that an officer review the videos if they don't do a direct stop. So it will have to be reviewed, you know, for the whole administrative cost benefit analysis. But it's certainly one that staff will be investigating.
Great. And then stormwater was one that we also had tracked. I think there was one in particular that was going to allow preservations of mature trees to count as best practices for stormwater management. Do we know if that passed and would grant us that power to count that?
Yes, they did improve the definition so trees can count as best practice. And then some of the other legislation that council was interested in, that Arlington initiated, has been sent to study for the next year, which was a good way to keep it from being killed in legislation. And so our interim arborist will be working with the Arlington arborist, picking up from where Kate had started that work.
Great. Because I think that was one in particular that we thought we could implement fairly quickly and help keep more mature trees around if people could count them towards their stormwater best practices. And the last one was around plastic bag tax. I know when we were lobbying down in Richmond, the big point we were trying to push is that we would support it, but I think our concern was making sure the money could come back to localities in some way. Where do we end up on that, Cindy?
On the money piece, I will have to double check, unless Benjamin, you remember off the top of your head.
There were two, I think, two similar bills down on plastic bags and single-use plastics, on line 272. One authorizes a county or city to impose a tax. And I think the second one was talking about the use of revenue from that tax. And the use of revenue from that tax in that bill was trying to get it deposited into the water quality improvement fund, but this bill failed. But the first one with the plastic bags and the local tax, that did pass. It allows retailers to collect the tax. And I don't know much more.
That's fine. We'll follow up on that. I know that I've already heard from Arlington and the several of the Northern Virginia legislative liaisons are working to see who's going to implement and try to do it regionally and coordinate our efforts to this new state authority. But we'll follow up on the revenue distribution.
Yeah, that one, I think, in pre-pandemic times, I was pretty interested in. But right now, I'm pretty sensitive to our small businesses having a lot to do. And so that may be one just good to have in our pocket to think about later on.
We have plenty of work to keep us busy with the other legislations, plus what's before you now for COVID.
Well, thank you again, Benjamin, really nice work.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on this topic?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Of course, Vice Mayor Connolly, and then Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Benjamin, I'm going to echo what everyone else has said, that you did a great job on this. It's really impressive. And as Ms. Hardy said, so many more interesting things happening in the General Assembly this year, so I appreciate your following up and tracking them. I have a question about the solar freedom bill, which passed, you said passed. And my question is probably from Ms. Mester or Mr. Shields, and that is, does that mean that we'll be able to take advantage of that on our new high school? I know that was our big concern, that the capacity would have been reached in the area. And with this new bill, does that give us more opportunity to have solar on the high school?
Oh, should I answer?
I don't know, I don't know the answer.
I believe, I'm not sure, I don't think it, it might say it in the freedom bill, but I believe there's also something in the school construction section. If I remember right, there was something about solar. I believe it may have failed, but I'll have to look into that a little bit more.
Okay. There was a cap on the amounts that we could generate, I think?
Yes, I think that was in the solar freedom bill.
I know that Kate Walker and Tim Stevens are looking at these bills closely, and we can follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. I think that's an important one for us, just because if we would like to have our net zero high school, that needs to pass in a way that will help us do that. Thank you again, Benjamin, nice work.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse, did you have a question?
I did. To Vice Mayor Connolly, Vice Mayor Connolly, I think that it does, in fact, help us to make sure that we fit inside of that cap that'll allow us to get the, to get the project moving. So defer ultimately to the experts there, but I'm pretty sure that that's what that means. Benjamin, nice job, man, really nice job. I was impressed when I read through that. And similar to Councilwoman Hardy's comments, I thought that came from another bodies. I was impressed. Quick question for you, maybe for Cindy, related to the school composite index. It looks like, because that's always been a thorn in our side, or at least me personally, it looks like the actual bill passed, but there's a line there that says, "The fiscal year 21 budget retained benchmarking funding." Is that government speak for, there's money in there to spend to study to see if people need to press this issue further and that we need to redo the composite index? Is that what that means?
Two separate things. The local composite index formula was not changed, but they did keep some re-benchmarking in there and reset some of the thresholds within the formula. The governor did retain most of the money from the re-benchmarking study in the budget, whereas a lot of the other school funding initiatives and positive things were put on hold. So it does seem there is some positive calculations in the re-benchmarking that could help our public schools, but the actual formula itself did not change.
Okay, thank you.
That's a very simple answer on a complex issue, so we can follow up more in coordination with the schools, if you like.
I really just want to know if we're going to end up getting more money.
I'll circle back with the superintendent, because I cannot answer the specific, how it will flow to us.
Okay, all right, thank you. Benjamin, great job again.
All right, any other questions on this topic?
Want to do the mayor?
Yes, Mr. Z.
Let me just circle back to some of the questions that were asked. The issue with regard to the plastic bags, for example, that was really on the cusp of not being passed. The two recipients would have been either the Chesapeake Bay Protection, which would have received an estimated $182 million from one fiscal year's of collection. The other one would have been retaining it at the local level, which would have been probably less all the way around, largely because the retailers get to keep some of it as administrative fee for collecting the money and then passing it forward to their jurisdiction. I think we do need to be glad that we passed that. And so what's next, I think the next step would be all single-use plastics. That would be a huge sea change that would affect the economy. I've always held that we don't necessarily need a pandemic to have good air quality. And so this is one that we might be able to work on in the coming year. The other one is the question that the Vice Mayor asked. And in that regard, the Virginia Clean Energy Act, that includes the solar freedom principles, and specifically highlighted as the solar freedom portion, gives us lots of flexibility to not have to have private funding, excuse me, public funding, to get these structures built. We can now monetize these things. Investors can then capitalize it, take advantage of depreciation, take advantage of a waiver on the equipment, because it's considered to be pollution control measures and a whole variety of things. It does not necessarily need to be in a school bill, it probably should not be. It should be in a place where you can find it and now bury it into some voluminous school construction budget item, which is, as we know, it's just, as I say, larded into various things that get done. So having said that, I also want to add my accolades. I don't know how you got to want to do this, Benjamin. You are not the typical high school student that says, "I want to write journeyman staff level summaries." And you probably know that's a very difficult art. Some people do it for 35 years, and they still don't get it. I am impressed. So the question to you is, why did you choose this?
Well, I've recently been more into, well, this year, I also, at school, I joined Model United Nations. I've started to get into lots more government-related things, also a little bit of politics. And I've just, I've just started to become much more interested in these things as time's gone on. And my dad just found the opportunity, and he asked me to go interview. And yeah, I just, I just started to get, I'm not exactly sure how to articulate it that much, but I just got more interested in the topic in the past year. And I thought I could do a good job, I guess.
Well, let me give you a challenge, then. And I just laid out perhaps one that you might be interested in doing with respect to single-use plastics. There are other things, of course. There's lots to follow with regard to solar freedom. Solar freedom was really a test to see whether it had broad acceptability in the state of Virginia. We can do some of that. We can create renewable energy standards, that's another transition. Stormwater never rests, so there's that as well. And so, the challenge here is that if you remain interested, I'd like to ask you to stay in touch, stay in touch with us, and when we come to legislative session, hopefully we'll have one this fall, that you bring forward the ideas that you and your classmates might have. Thank you so much, Benjamin.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments on our legislative agenda, legislative updates?
Mayor, oh, sorry, go ahead, Ms. Shaw.
Sure, two quick comments. First of all, this session produced some firearms regulatory measures that many of us have been advocating for more than a decade. So I think there's a real breakthrough there. In terms of highway safety, it was less than satisfactory, I think. One of the key pieces of legislation that I think we need to keep supporting in the future is the ability of the city to lower the speed limit below 25 miles per hour. That failed, and there were some other highway safety measures. So hopefully, we can revisit those in our legislative program going forward. Cindy, do you see any problem with doing that?
No, I think pursuing it next year would be good. And I think we, I've heard from community members that was supported, the lowering the speeds in particular had made it all the way through. And it was at the final negotiations of the final bill that it died. So I think we'd have a good chance next year to try again.
Thanks much. And to Benjamin, thank you very much. On my day job, I work on some United Nations environmental programs. So if that's ever of an interest, feel free to reach out. I'd love to work with you on your UN interest. Thanks very much.
Oh, yeah, that was actually my first ever committee, which is UNEA, U-N-E-A. So, yeah, I could be interested in that.
Great, let's talk. Thank you very much again for your great work for, not only us, but more importantly, for the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, Ben. I hope we can retain your services as our legislative tracker until you go off to college and begin your career as somebody who's probably going to be writing the legislation that you're now tracking. Just one thing on line 277, this is really a question for Wyatt, I think. The election day is now designated as a state holiday. I think, have I read somewhere, what you're thinking about, is that going to be a city holiday too? How are we, are the schools going to go to school on election day? Do we know anything about that yet?
It's something that we need to work through, yes. The presumption is that will be a local holiday. And November has Veterans Day, Columbus Day, and Indigenous Peoples' Day, and now Election Day, three holidays. So what I envision is a discussion both with employees about trading out a holiday for Election Day, and ultimately, the city council will make that determination. The city council sets all of our holidays.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are there any other comments before I move from this topic? All right, let's go ahead and move on. Thank you all, Cindy Wyatt, and particularly Ben. We greatly appreciate all your good work, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on now to the receipt of public comments. Madam Clerk, will you go ahead and read our summary of our written comments?
Yes, sir. And I just want to remind the public that my office, the City Clerk's office, takes public comment all the time. And as soon as we receive comment, we send it to city council, we format it, we add it to the record. It gets summarized at these regular meetings. We're doing some different things with the electronic meetings. We do have public hearings tonight, so we keep the lines open, the email lines open during the public hearings to keep receiving public comment. So that email address is cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. The public hearings we have tonight will actually basically stay open until we go for final action on Tuesday, May 26, on the budget. So all of that time, it's an open time, you can send your comments, and I will make sure that council sees them. And again, it's cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. And what I'm going to do now is just go through the public comments we got that were not budget-related. And if you don't mind, just saving the budget public comments until we get to that public hearing. Does that work for you?
Sure.
Okay. So we heard from Anna and Mort Dworkin in response to the easement at Big Chimneys Park. And they asked for no further reduction of trees in that park because of the easement. The Chamber of Commerce thanked the council for the Small Business Saturdays 2.0 proclamation and the work they're doing for small businesses. Vipas expressed concerns about the Washington gas easement in West End Park and requested a meeting with staff so they could better understand it. Madeline Smith of 320 Grove Avenue expressed opposition to allowing a gas easement in West End Park. And then Vipas also provided comments on a proposed mural at Mr. Brown's Park and asked for public, that the public be allowed to have input on that. Carol Sly of 304 Shadow Walk suggested a curbside pickup program for library books, which maybe Mr. Shields might know about that. And Susan and James Hamilton of 309 Grove Avenue requested parking enforcement on Grove Avenue to stop Founders Row construction parking on the street. I think Mr. Shields knows about that one, too. Dan Lehman expressed concern about mowing practices in Howard Herman Park. Fred Thompson of 502 West Broad Street requested that tenants' courts be reopened. And Rosalie Kozdelt wrote to thank council for the new pedestrian crossing signals at Lincoln and Great Falls.
All right, thank you very much. And so I presume that that comment includes everything up until now, is that right? Like as of this meeting, other than budget comments?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And we're still receiving budget comments right now.
All right, and let the public know once again that they can send their email comments to us during the penancy of this hearing throughout the rest of the evening, and they will be read to us. And those emails should be sent to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov.
Very good.
All right, so let's move on to council requests. Are there any council requests? All right, how about now the report of the city manager, Mr. Shields?
Before I get to that, I wasn't quick enough on the trigger here. I just want to ask the city manager, and you can incorporate in your report if you want, what the status is on setting up the oversight committee for the library project. It's been underway now for a couple of months. And I think we all understand and agree that the best time to set up an oversight structure the best time to set up an oversight structure and the protocols, to allow it to have its, discover how it works together, the team forming, is better to have it done when it's not under extremist. They want to set up an oversight committee, and the first item is that we are now 10% behind our schedule. So do you have a path forward for us? I know you and I have talked about this.
Yes, let me speak to that if I may. The library project is on schedule and is on budget, but we want to get this committee stood up. We have had one staff run-through of what the meeting, how we expect we'll present the information at the oversight committee meetings. And one thing that I think is important for the committee is having your reports reflect a date and time. And we have agreed that the appropriate date of time would be the end of month. And so the meeting should be about 10 days after the end of the month so that we can reconcile any of the invoices and the bills, et cetera, into a report for the prior month. And so naturally then, our first meeting would be on June 10th or thereabouts. But that's a full month away from right now. So let me speak with you, and I can also communicate with the other members of it just about that plan, and also share in writing all the information that we have. And if we want to go ahead and have an April report here in mid-May, we can certainly do that as well, and then get into a rhythm of around the 10th of the month, have a look back of the prior month, and also look ahead for the construction activities that will happen in the current and next months.
Well, I agree. And I think that, you know, it doesn't have to be a high lift, full-blown kind of thing if you're incomplete. We do know it is the 11th of May. Why don't we try to get something scheduled virtually by and done, quite frankly, before the end of the week? If we can turn Thursday, that'd be great.
We'll do that.
And we can talk tomorrow if you'd like.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other council requests before I move to the report of the city manager? All right, Mr. City Manager.
Well, thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. I'd like, if I may, during the city manager's report to cover and kind of rapid-fire a whole range of different issues and updates, and then have a, have a discussion also of some of the communications from the governor on the Phase 1 reopening. But first, sort of the round-the-horn items, if I could just report briefly on a couple of things. One, real estate bills will be mailed by the treasurer this week. They will be due on July 6th, which is a month later than normal. This is an action taken by the city council to extend the due date for the, what is normally the June 5th real estate bill. So bills should be in your mailbox this week. The mortgage companies have already gotten their bills and are already paying them, but those who don't have a mortgage will get them this week. A note about the city's recycling center. Our Department of Public Works is experiencing a surge in things that are being left at the recycling center that are not recyclable. So we just ask the public to please not put that burden on our public work staff to have to deal with that and only leave recyclables at the recycling center. Our recyclable container in particular has been filled with things that are not recyclable, and that puts a real burden, and it's difficult to get that out of that bin. But it's just been a general problem. Ask for the public's help with us on that. With respect to Big Chimneys Park, there was a comment about that tonight and also at your meeting last week. And so let me give an update. The city arborist has confirmed that the utility work, the underground electrical work, which is being done in Big Chimneys Park, can be done in a manner that will not harm the existing trees. One, it is out of the critical root zone of the trees that are on the eastern side of the park, and the work also is going to be bored rather than open trench. There are some really beautiful trees on that east side of the park, and none of them are slated to be removed for this utility work. And we'll be working, to the extent that any of the work is close to those trees, it will be done very carefully. I want to note for, so to follow up on that, we have executed the easement that the council authorized last week with that confirmation from the city arborist, that it would not result in the removal of any additional trees. The Aurora House, I just want to note that on May 6th, 1990, we had our first client at the Aurora House, and so we want to say happy birthday. 30 years of service to our young girls at the Aurora House, and that's quite, quite a record of achievement there. The Fellow's Property, the demolition of the Fellow's home is underway, and we're going to do that work also very carefully around the beautiful trees that are in the, on the Fellow's Park property. And I also just want to note, we are holding back almost all of our capital spending right now, so why have we proceeded with the Fellow's demolition? And there's two reasons. One, we signed the contract for this demolition before the COVID pandemic crisis started. And secondly, the way that this demolition is being paid for is through the bond proceeds that were used to purchase the property. So it's not coming out of the general fund. The contract to demolish the property, or the purchase order, is for just over $20,000, A note on the census. We have right now, we're neck-and-neck competition with the city of Fairfax for the highest completion rate of the online census reporting forms. We're closing in on 75% of our estimated population has completed the forms. And again, Fairfax City is about a half a percent ahead of us. So we need to keep up the good work and see if we can't get all the way there. It is a fact that for every census form that's not completed online, it is a very expensive and time-consuming process then to go door-to-door, and it will also be something in the current pandemic, something that will be difficult to do. So we really encourage everybody to take the time to go online with your card and fill out your census form. A note on summer camps. We have communicated with everyone who has signed up for camps already about our schedule and put out a sort of a general letter and notice, and this has also been in our daily reports. We're working really hard to have summer camps this summer, but that's going to be contingent upon the governor's reopening schedule, and we're also coordinating our plans regionally so that we're doing similar things on camps to the best extent as practical. Our goal is to have a decision on the early round of camps, summer camps, by June 1st. And when I say the early round, those are the camps that would run from June 15th to July 2nd. That's contingent upon the city being in the Phase 2 of the governor's Virginia Forward blueprint for easing coronavirus restrictions. The decision point for the second round of summer camps, which runs from July 6th to August 14th, the target date for that decision is June 12th. So we recognize that this is really important for our working families to have a place for their children to learn and get exercise and grow in summer camps, and particularly for essential personnel. So we are working to make that decision, but we simply don't have the information yet to go firm with it. But that's, that's the basic planning horizon. The Northern Virginia Regional Park Authority and the Dual Trails Project, an update on that. As the council is aware, we've gotten a number of comments on stormwater projects. We are working closely with the Park Authority on the Trammell Branch project, just from an engineering perspective, about the best way we can solve for the flooding issues upstream of the, the pipes that run underneath the Park Authority property. And secondly, there were a lot of comments about stormwater generally on the dual, on the, coming from the, the Park Authority or using the Park Authority property to help with stormwater. We're currently reviewing their April site plan submission, and really, the only outstanding issues in that site plan have been in the nature of stormwater. We hope to get the clarifications that we've requested, and, and we'll report that out. The Park Authority is anxious to get their site plan approved. They are intending to complete their engineering and advertise for bid in June and have construction this summer. Just a note from the library. There was a question about curbside delivery for library books. That is in the works, and we're going to have more to say about that publicly soon, but our library staff have been working very hard to open up curbside delivery there at the temporary location at TJ Elementary School. I also want to note that the number of people who've requested a library card in the last month has been higher than the same comparable period of time last year. So our library usage has certainly not slowed down in the current pandemic. And lastly, I just want to thank the mayor and city council for the Public Service Recognition Week proclamation for the last week. Nationwide public service was recognized. And in our daily brief, our Office of Communications did a great job, I think, in highlighting some of our public servants who work for the city of Falls Church. Tracy Browden, the senior center was featured. Zach Bradley, who's been doing so many great projects for pedestrian crossings and, and street paving and that type of thing for Public Works. Ripple Patel and Human Services was featured. Matt Parker, Officer Matt Parker, and his dog Fitz were featured. Claire Jamaican and the Commissioner of Revenue, and Adrian Williams with the Aurora House also is featured. It's just a great way to celebrate sort of the diversity of our workforce, all the different services that our employees provide. And I just want to thank everybody for participating in that great Public Service Recognition Week. So that's a run-through of a couple of things of, things that are happening in the city. And now I'll transition to a discussion of the discussions over the past week, or maybe weeks, with the governor and his team with respect to the Forward Virginia roadmap for easing the current restrictions related to COVID-19. Last Friday, Governor Northam issued Executive Order 61, and that lays out the guidelines for businesses on what Phase 1 would look like. Some of the headlines from that would be that restaurants would be able to shift from takeout-only to providing service outdoors if they already have a certificate of occupancy for outdoor service. Barber shops and salons would be able to be open and provide service only by appointment and only with wearing PPE for customers and staff. Those are a couple of the examples. The faith community places of worship would be able to have indoor services at 50% capacity. Nonessential retail would be able, would be still subject to the, well, would have certain restrictions, but they would be able to be open at 50% of their normal occupancy limits. The social, for, for social gatherings, the limit would still be at 10 persons. And in a nutshell, Phase 1 was a very conservative take on the first phases of gradually opening the economy back up. On Saturday, the Northern Virginia Health Directors did have a, and it's been a lot of discussion about this for over the past month, about when the time would be right. But the health directors did provide a letter to Governor Northam noting their view that based on the data and based on the, the metrics that the governor had laid out, that Northern Virginia was distinct from the rest of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Our caseloads and the trends for those caseloads, as well as hospitalization, as well as the other metrics that the governor laid out, that Northern Virginia was still not on the downward trend. And therefore, they, it was their assessment that Northern Virginia is not ready for Phase 1 of reopening on Friday, May 15th. On Sunday, the jurisdictions from Northern Virginia and through the Northern Virginia Regional Commission wrote letters to the governor acknowledging the health director's findings and similar terms, and also noting the distinct patterns in Northern Virginia. Today, the governor had a press conference, and he did not make an announcement on any changes to the schedule, but he did take time to go through the data and emphasized the facts of the difference of the, the trends and trajectories of the pandemic through the Northern Virginia population relative to the rest of the state. And in my own words, I would say he signaled that it is likely that on Wednesday, he will have a, a different schedule for Phase 1 reopening, and that that might take the form of an amendment to Executive Order 61 specifically impacting Northern Virginia. The, all of the correspondence with the governor has emphasized a couple of points. One, that the governor's plan has, has sound criteria and sound process for reopening. Really, the, the point of the letters was that the data in Northern Virginia is distinct from the rest of the state, and therefore, Northern Virginia deserves some consideration for being treated differently in the reopening process. So we will expect to see an announcement on Wednesday. I think also, I'll just note that all the correspondence and all the communication with the governor has also acknowledged the extreme difficulty that the current restrictions have placed on our community, on our business community, on our workers, on everybody, and that that is, is fully understood, and, and it's very painful. But the goal is to have a reopening process that is steady and progressive and does not require a, a coming back to the, the extreme shutdowns that we have in place today. So that's a summary of a lot of the activity of the weekend. I know Mayor Tarter was working with and in communication with colleagues across Northern Virginia, really over the last several weeks, as well as, I think, all of the members of council have been plugged into this discussion. I know that there's also not unanimity in our community or in our elected body on all of the details of this plan or, you know, the broad approach. We understand that as well. But we're trying to get through this in, in the manner that is, A, understandable for the public, that the public can follow because they make sense, and, and ultimately will produce the best health outcomes and economic outcomes for the region and for our community. So I'll stop there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on either the earlier part of the report or the latter part of the report with respect to the reopening process. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shields. That was quite, quite thorough report, a lot covered. Do we have questions or comments from Mr. Shields on his report?
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder, a couple of questions. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. I especially want to recognize your leadership at NVRC and all the work that you put in there and at COG and elsewhere. I do, however, want to ask, because a letter that has the potential impact, that the kind of letter that we're talking about here, basically extending the shutdown in Northern Virginia longer than the rest of the state, has budgetary impact, it addresses public health issues and others. Might it be possible to have a council discussion in action before a letter like that is sent in the future? And I know that there's a time crunch and things like that, but this is so significant. Its economic impact, not just on businesses, but on nonprofits. Its economic impact, not just on businesses, but on nonprofits, churches and others, as well as the different criteria that exist out there, whether it's the governors, the other states, whatever, and that our particular public health people have adopted a particular approach which may or may not be challengeable. My question really is, in the future, and this is a request, can you bring this kind of matter before city council for a discussion and action before, before a letter like that goes out with the kind of vast significance that it, that it had? And again, it's not a negative toward you at all. I appreciate your work. I appreciate your leadership. But an issue of this importance, it seems to me, ought to come before the council in a public meeting. Thank you.
Sure. No, I understand and I appreciate that, that perspective. And I would say, under ordinary circumstances, I certainly at all times endeavor to make sure that our discussion is thorough and public and allows our citizens to have input. On the most recent activity, what happened is that essentially this came together over the weekend. And so the health officials issued their letter, I believe, Saturday, if recollection serves correctly. And so jurisdictions throughout Northern Virginia, and I think essentially jurisdictions representing probably close to 99% of the Northern Virginia's population have joined in one of several letters to the governor in support of essentially the same notion. And so, but I understand that this is something of great importance and not to be taken lightly. But I would say that I think in this particular circumstance, it was difficult, given the time crunch, and everyone on council did get a copy of this letter prior to being sent out and an opportunity to respond and offer any comments. But I think in general, it would be much preferable to do these kind of discussions in a fully open and public and notice meeting. But I would say that matters with respect to the coronavirus are are moving, you know, fast and quickly, and so I don't think we always have that luxury, but your point is well taken.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Duncan.
Certainly, I'm always happy to have my opinion solicited and to offer it. And in normal times, it's desirable to hear what everybody else thinks in a setting like this. This is, you know, not normal times, and I am struck by how fluid the environment is that we're working. I try to listen to Northam's pressers every day and, I mean, three times a week when he holds them, and I'm just really struck, the notes that I take, how quickly things change, you know? I mean, it has not been a week since it was said that, no, 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 we're going to open as a whole state. And, you know, within three or four days, because of the data that's coming in, that just, that changed. And you were caught, I think, in the middle of that change over the weekend, and I appreciate the time you've spent through the NVRC. I frankly think that the smaller jurisdictions personally, this is just my opinion, are, are leading the way and speaking as one, and I'm pleased that the bigger jurisdictions are now joining with us because I don't, this, this business has not been led well from the highest levels in Washington, and it's necessary, I think, for some of the folks at the local level to to take charge. And I know the governor is trying to do that, and I appreciate what you and now all the jurisdictions, I believe almost all, in Northern Virginia are doing. So that's the end of my little speech on that. I wondered if I could just ask a question, maybe as much the city attorney, but perhaps, perhaps Wyatt could speak to it. It's about the long-term care facility data. I've read some things that suggest that the Federal Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services is, is collecting and intends to publish, publicize data about, you know, case data and deaths and PPE availability and so forth, term care facilities. And yet, in the Virginia code, those, I think, are treated as individuals, and so therefore not subject to being publicized because of privacy reasons. Just here in Falls Church, with Kensington and Sunrise being, you know, very important components of our local situation, I wonder, where, where are we going with that? Are we going to ever be at the point where we'll be able to, you know, know and share with the public, hopefully to build their confidence, that those institutions are adequately staffed and provided with protective equipment and, you know, have a handle on their caseload and their treatment? Are we going to be able to get data on that kind of information in the foreseeable future?
Councilmember Duncan, I don't really have the answer to that question. I have seen that question asked of the governor repeatedly and his response about how the long-term care facilities are corporations, and under the law, then a corporation is considered a person and therefore subject to the HIPAA confidentiality rules. I find that remarkable, but that does seem to be the law that is being stated by many. It does seem to me it's useful information for family members to have, and, but I can't comment in terms of where this, where this particular issue is going to go.
Okay, thanks. I hope it goes in a direction that, you know, takes more transparency because it does seem like it would be useful information for the community to be armed with. But thanks.
All right. Do other folks have comments or questions?
Yeah, I've got a, I've just got, I've got a question. I had a call shortly. Thanks, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I had a question. I had a call shortly before meeting started from a, from a resident, a community member. The, the decision ultimately as to what the jurisdictions are going to do is going to follow suit from the decision that's made by Northam down in Richmond, correct? We're not, my understanding of that letter, my understanding of the language that accompanied that was an affirmation that, yes, our data is different, but also an affirmation that local jurisdictions will continue to follow the lead of the governor in Richmond. Is that correct? Can someone confirm that?
I'd be happy to, or Mayor Tarter, would you like to?
So that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So we're not talking about, we're asking for consideration of specific data, how it impacts the Phase One reopening and the metrics that were set out, but this is not a declaration of, of jurisdictions in Virginia talking about bucking the orders of, of the governor as to what may be announced Wednesday.
My understanding is we don't have that authority. Localities do not have the authority.
I think, I agree with that.
Okay. I just want to be clear in that because I did get some, again, some questions as to that, and what I relayed to them was, we don't have the authority. We will continue to follow the lead of, of what takes place in Richmond. We're simply voicing our concerns and consideration of data surrounding the decisions behind the metrics that are leasing, leading to that Phase One reopening decision. So, okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lipton House. Other folks have any comments or questions or requests for Mr. Shields?
Mayor, I have some questions.
Yes, Ms. Hardy?
I think I heard Ms. Connolly, too.
I'll go after you. It's okay.
Okay, thank you. So, first of all, thank you, Mayor, for your leadership. Just echoing other comments before, I know how hard it is to follow the situation, given how fluid it is. I appreciate your leadership and joining with the region on pushing for it. I, for one, support the letter, and I think you probably have a majority on council as well. Because it's been so fluid, though, one question, concern I want to share is making sure that the word gets out to the small businesses and other organizations. I think after last Friday's announcement, some people thought, okay, May 15th might be the date, and if Northern Virginia is going to have a different schedule, I want to make sure people hear that, too, and understand what that means and that word gets out. Just by, I guess, Wednesday, people only have two days, and I don't want businesses to inadvertently open thinking they've gotten the green light. So I want to make sure that we give some thought on that. It's probably pretty tricky, given that, that's probably why they wanted to have a statewide approach. But something for us to think about, Mr. Shields, is making sure that the region, especially in Falls Church and other Northern Virginia localities, get the word out if we are going to be on a different timetable and potentially even getting the word out now.
Yeah, thank you. The point is very well taken. I think this has been very confusing for the business community, and we need to do everything we can to try to take a confusing situation and make it something that they can make plans off of. I think, I think the restaurant community in particular, standing up a restaurant. Now, granted, Phase One was simply to expand or to be able to have outdoor seating. For some, that may be a major change; for others, maybe not. But still, you need to order food, you've got payroll issues, you, planning goes into this, and we understand that and respect that, and I think we're a little bit, we are concerned about the uncertainty that we have that will go until Wednesday, at least, on, on this specific question.
Great. On that note about kind of how to support the businesses, I think last week you mentioned kind of forming a reopening task force or Business Recovery Task Force, and I think you mentioned it was mainly staff members. I'd like to make a suggestion just to broaden the membership of that, if possible, because I do think it would be helpful to actually have some business participation in that. They probably know best what sort of things they need to prepare, what sort of questions, where they're looking for guidance or supplies, if there's going to be, you know, CDC recommended disinfectants that everyone needs to use. Those sorts of things that would be helpful to push out from the government to businesses, and those are the questions we want to hear from the business community. So whether it's chamber membership or other members in the business, I think it'd be helpful to include them in that task force.
Thank you. That's a good suggestion. And I will just say, and, you know, earlier, this committee was just a small technical working group to try to anticipate what the questions were going to be, and, and frankly, it's been a frustrating exercise because we, too, have had to read the tea leaves as to what are the rules going to be, and we find out very much the same time with the public. But the point is well taken. I have had a conversation with Sally Cole, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, as well as the chairman of the EDA, Bob Young, about their participation, and we can go, you know, from there with additional business people. The purpose of this group is to anticipate the questions that are going to come so that we can have as clear answers as possible. And so having the business community involved is useful. I do want to note, this is not a policy group. This is an implementation group of policies that are being made by the governor and also by our local health department. Thank you.
Great. I think the two big themes is, one is, you know, obviously sharing guidance as we get it from the state on how to reopen safely, so I think this group can really function that way. I think the big other theme is just reading kind of how the governor is thinking of Phase One reopening or actually each subsequent phase, is really giving people and businesses space. And so I think it goes back to that emergency action we took, I guess, right after we started convening again, to allow people to have outdoor dining or to vend on sidewalks. And so if we can start thinking about now that, I think one thing that we should anticipate is businesses are going to come to us asking how they can use outdoor space to make it safer for their customers. And so I know we already allowed from, allowed flexibility, the council allowed flexibility for people to do that, to use parking lots and sidewalks, but that's probably something that we should anticipate, I guess, in the planning department, we might get more requests of. And I think our job as government in this place is to let people innovate, and hopefully we can get out of their way, and obviously doing in a safe way.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I'm going to complain just a little bit also. This is another one of these uncertain areas. In the governor's announcement, he stated businesses that have existing outdoor eating space. And in the executive order itself, it states if you already have a certificate of occupancy for an outdoor seating space. Does that mean you can't expand in parking lots where there isn't outdoor seating in the past? We're trying to get clarification on that. That's a huge question, huge issue, and it's difficult to get an answer on. But we're, we're pushing to get answers so that we can provide clarity for the business community.
Great. I'm glad you guys are pushing on that question. And then third is around mask use. I know that the city's already pushed kind of face coverings and making sure that we start increasing adherence to it. So my personal take is, I think it's going to be really key to economic recovery. So I think as CDC guidance changes, getting people to adopt and use them is going to be really important. And I know that the city has done a good job of collecting masks and donations from very generous community members. I would love for us to think about whether we can offer some for free to people who can't afford them, whether that's through donations or whether we could buy them. But I think it'd just be a, a nice thing to be able to offer to people who can't go out and buy them themselves or just want to be able to offer them to community members.
It's a, it's a good, one question has come up, could the, could, can Falls Church have a mask order? And I think the answer to that is no, we cannot. And the governor's been asked a couple of times about whether a mask would be part of his executive order. It is not so far. But having them available is a great incentive to encourage their use, particularly as we open up the economy. I think that could be very helpful for a good, safe reopening.
Yes, I think definitely more carrot than stick in this case, if we can give some for free.
That's right.
Great. And then the last one I just wanted to mention is, related to Phil's question about privacy and sharing data, I did want to point out for the rest of council that the health department has actually started releasing positive cases by ZIP Code, and I think that's actually pretty telling because I think as we've seen across the United States, clearly the virus is disproportionately impacting our vulnerable and kind of lower associate economic status, which is really unfortunate, given the disparities already in access to healthcare and education and housing. But I think that also getting points of why Northern Virginia might not be quite ready yet, when you actually look at that ZIP Code level data. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And I guess to your point earlier about the task force and the like, Mr. Shields, I think it'd be good if we could find ways to get city council members, maybe to either be a liaison or to have some more direct involvement in some of these efforts that we're doing. And just a thought, I, I don't think we have to discuss it at length right now, but maybe just give some consideration of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Right. Back to Mr. Shields' report on activities in the city, I just want to flag two things that I've seen, and if others haven't seen, you should sign up for, and that is Cherryhill Farmhouse is doing some great emails and stuff online for kids, activities. Corrie Januselli's doing a great job on that. And then also the Wreckin Parks has a bi-weekly newsletter, I think, called the Virtual Community Center? Virtual, it's great. It's got lots of good ideas and things for parents and kids. So I just want to commend both of them on rethinking how they're delivering services.
Thank you for that. And, yeah, there's been a lot of great creative service delivery and ways of engaging that you're seeing on Wreckin Parks, library, every department in the city is, is trying to figure out how to do it in new and interesting ways.
Right. And that's, that's hard, to be thinking and planning, and, and when things are changing for businesses, then they're also changing for all of our individual departments. So I commend them for that. My question, Mr. Shields, is around testing, because one of the governor's measures of being able to reopen is adequate testing or a certain number of testing per day. And I'm just wondering, what, I keep hearing that Arlington has a testing site here, and now there's walk-up testing at Arlington Mill that's starting tomorrow, and I'm assuming that's all through the Arlington Health Department. Does the Fairfax Health Department have any places they're doing testing? Could we open testing in Falls Church? I'm assuming Kaiser does testing for their members. Is Patient First doing testing? Because I think that is really important, if we're going to be able to reopen, is to have testing accessible and available to everyone.
Yeah, I think everybody agrees with you on that, and testing remains one of the great frustrations of our response. I raise this issue on a weekly basis with Dr. Gloria, and she's very frustrated with the level of testing as well. So I guess all I can say is, we, we keep pressing on this issue, and I will share what information that I have as quickly as I do have it. We are advocating for it. Right now, it, all tests are physician ordered, and so it is very much driven by the medical centers. But hopefully that will change, and it will broaden and be available at pharmacies or or just much more accessible places than is currently the case.
Do you know if it's available at any doctor's offices in Falls Church?
I don't have the answer to that question. I think it is, but I don't have the specifics.
Okay.
I seem to recall, and don't take this as gospel, but I thought I heard a news story that Patient First was trying to ramp up to do testing at some or maybe all of their locations.
I, yeah, I think they're doing it in Manassas, but I don't know that they're doing it in Falls Church yet.
Okay.
I had put out a question to them today to ask if they were, and I haven't heard back yet.
Okay. All right. Are there other questions or comments from anyone? Are there other questions or comments from anyone? Or should we move on to business on the agenda?
Could I ask this?
Oh, not so fast.
Okay. All right. Let's get, let's go to Mr. Z, and then we'll hit you back, Mr. Duncan, and then head on. But anyway, Mr. Z, go for it.
I'm pretty fast about this. So if we are going to have masks, you know, the new breed of litter we see around are discarded gloves, masks. Life was much simpler when it was just, you know, Burger King Coke cups. And now we have stuff that's a biohazard. That's unfortunate. But if you, we are going to stockpile masks, perhaps we should imprint them. If you don't get fabric masks, then they can be Falls Church better together. There are lots of t-shirt companies that do that. Then everyone that wears them will be, you know, they will know it's provided by the city. Actually, my, my issue is, and I'm glad you touched on this, recycling. All these aspirational recyclers, it'd just be so much simpler if the people that use polystyrene just imprint, does not recycle, goes in the trash. So simple. But we probably need to have a president that actually understands that as something that's worthwhile doing. Because that piece of styrofoam makes the whole load garbage. It all goes away. I have observed that the purple bins that we put in for glass, they get replaced every Thursday day. The one bin we have gets replaced every Thursday. I would say by noon time on Sunday, it's at 100% capacity. So I'm not really talking about the lawn chairs or TVs or all this other stuff that people have suddenly discovered they have free time to drag out of their basement and just dump it in our nice shiny area. But seriously, I think we need to look at two purple bins. So if you can do that and get back to us, that'd be great. Are there any handicaps or impediments you can see right away?
The, the only, well, we, I think we have a space issue and we have a cost issue. I can get back with you on both. The space issue, you know, I think the original proposal actually that Lonnie Marquetti had, she wanted to have a second bin at City Hall so that people would have two places to take their glass. And we scaled it down to one for cost reasons. The, but we'll get more numbers to you on the costs and that could be a markup discussion for next week.
That's good. We have lots of disappointed people hauling glass bottles back and forth. So, you know, if it's a resource they can use, we can amp up this activity. Maybe we can figure out some way of amortizing the cost of that. Thank you so much, Wyatt.
All right. Mr. Duncan?
Just a quickie on the public comment we got tonight about tennis. Being optimistic, let's hope that by this time next week, the numbers have turned in a direction that enables us to talk about, you know, participating in reopening. And I thought the comments from Mr. Thompson were pretty thorough as to, you know, the advantages of tennis as a recreational form and yet the challenges of the tennis courts becoming, you know, multi-play facilities and requiring enforcement and so forth. But, you know, I think it would be good to begin to quiz the police folks and others, rec folks about how we might get our tennis courts back open for social distancing as one of our first, you know, first efforts in the reopening phase.
And Danny and I have been discussing that already in response to Mr. Thompson's email. And it was, I'll just note, the reason that they were closed is really not because of tennis players, but they were proving to be places that are very attractive for big groups of people, mostly teenagers coming together and, and playing. And that is the reason why we shut them down earlier. We'd like to get them back open and like to find a way to do it the right way.
Well, thank you.
All right. And unless there are any other comments, why don't we move on to business on the agenda? We still got business on the agenda tonight. Madam Clerk, will you call the first item, please?
I will. We have two items for public hearing tonight. We have TO 20-05 ordinance fixing and determining the budget of expenditures and revenues and appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2021. General Fund, School Operating Fund, School Community Service Fund, School Service Fund, School Food Service Fund, Cable Access Fund, Sewer Fund, and Stormwater Fund. We also have TO 20-07 ordinance setting the rate of tax levy on real estate for tax year 2021 and on personal property machinery and tools and all other property segregated by law for local taxation in the city of Falls Church, Virginia for tax year 2020.
All right. Thank you very much. And before we get started, I imagine Ms. Connolly might have a statement to read, and I'm going to give her the opportunity.
Would you read yours first? I have to pull mine up.
Sure. All right. So I'm going to go ahead. I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-05 and TO dash, or TO 20-07, the general fund budget and tax rates for fiscal year 2021. My wife is an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of three or more persons who may be affected by the FY 2021 budget. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public, public interest. Are you ready for yours yet, or do you need a moment more?
I'm ready.
All right.
I make the following statement before city council's consideration of TO 20-05 and TO 20-07, the FY 2021 general fund budget and tax rates. I am an employee of the Falls Church City School Board, and therefore I'm a member of a group of three or more persons who may be affected by these matters. I can participate in this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest.
All right. Thank you. So let's go on to our staff report. Is that you, Mr. Shields, or Ms. Bawa?
I think Mayor Charter will probably do it together, but maybe I'll start and just make a couple of notes to kick things off. And first, just by way of context, what this budget does is it's ultimately, it's a reduction in city spending for general government in the amount of $2.1 million less than the current fiscal year 2020. And it's a $5.1 million reduction relative to the budget that was presented to you on March 9th to kick off the budget season. So we have gone back and obviously we cut out all of the new initiatives that were in that budget, and then we took out an additional $2.1 million below that to arrive at the budget that's before you right now. Going forward, what we anticipate is that the council's work session next week will have a markup session where the council will work through the changes that you would like to make to this budget presentation. And to lead that discussion off and that tonight's council budget questions and answers, we have the beginning of a chart that we would typically have for a markup session. So tonight, we'd like to get your feedback on that chart, whether we have the right things in there and whether we're tending in the right direction in terms of the types of options for council's consideration on how to solve those problems. Before we dive into that chart, which I'll allow Ms. Bawa to walk us through, I did want to note just two pieces of good news in an otherwise pretty bleak environment for our business community, for our residents, as well as for local governments fiscally. But two points. One, Cindy Mester and her, and her team have been working with WAMADA. And WAMADA has received federal funding that we think will possibly translate into a reduction in the city's required contribution for WAMADA support. And so that's something we'll have more details on next week, but that could free up to the tune of Cindy Mester, what, what is the dollar amount that we're talking about that could be of a benefit with those changes?
$190,000 additional funds.
So that's one piece of potentially positive news that we'll want to solidify and see if we can take action on for, for councils, you know, for, for, sorry, moving things around before the council adopts it, the budget on Tuesday, May 22nd. I'm sorry, May 26th. The other piece of developing news is the distribution or the allocation of Virginia's share of the federal CARES III funding. As you'll recall, Virginia received $3.5 billion from the federal government for its COVID-19 response. Of that $3.5 billion, 1.3, more or less, I guess 1.1 after the Fairfax County allocation was taken out, was allocated or designated for local governments. What we have learned from, from the governor's statements and from the director of finance, Audrey Lane's statements, is that 650,000, 650 million remains to be allocated, but it is intended to go to local governments. Now, the question is exactly how that money's going to be allocated. And what the state government has committed so far is that a significant portion of it will be allocated on a per capita basis. Our concern has been that it might be allocated on the basis of other standing formulas for the distribution of state money, which tend to not favor Northern Virginia and not favor the city of Falls Church. We are a net payer of taxes to Richmond, not a net receiver by a long shot. So a straight, fair, per capita allocation model is something we've been advocating for. So just for context, if 100% of that $650 million was allocated on a per capita basis, then the city's allocation would be just under 1.2 million. If 50% of that $650 million was allocated on a per capita basis, then the city's allocation would be $600,000. Now, I will note that the rules for spending these funds are very strict, and those are laid out by the U.S. Treasury. And the Commonwealth of Virginia is going to be audited on the compliance with those rules, so they're going to be strict with us. But we've been keeping very close tabs on our spending directly related to the COVID response. And we've currently think that we can put those dollars, if they're in those amounts, to good use, and we have already expended chunks that are significant. So that's another piece of potentially good news.
If I could just interject just for, just real quick, I would just caution everyone that there are very strict rules from the U.S. Treasury on how the reimbursements or what the reimbursements can be made for. And although there may be money allocated on per capita basis, the actual utilization of the money has to meet this criteria. And so I would, I want to just caution everyone that even if our per capita number is higher, we still have to show fully, you know, each dollar was spent in a allocated way. And so I just want to make sure that people don't leave this conversation with the idea that, you know, we very well may be getting the money you just described because there are very strict limits to it and there, it's just unclear yet. So I just would like to maybe keep that caution out there.
Mayor Charter's remarks are exactly spot on. This is going to be, every dollar spent of this is going to be very closely scrutinized because the federal government has been explicit, this is not to make up for revenue shortfalls. This is to help localities protect the public in the midst of this pandemic. So every dollar that we could get reimbursed from these funds has to be an unbudgeted expenditure directly related to the COVID-19 response. There's more rules than that, but that's kind of the high level rule. This is, it's not intended to supplant other funds for the city. So, so that's, those are two pieces of things that we're going to be work with, that we will work with that might be on the positive side. But on the negative side, I would caution everyone, I would say that our revenue forecasts have, you know, remember, we had a range from the moderate case to the worst case or a worst case. We chose the moderate case in our revenue forecasting. I think it is highly likely, and I think Ms. Bawa agrees, that it is highly likely that our revenue shortfalls will be more severe than those that we're currently budgeting for. So even after the adoption of the budget, we're going to continue, all of your department directors and all of city staff are going to continue to be very prudent in our use of any dollars in anticipation of what could be a very prolonged and very deep economic recession. So that's by, a couple of comments by way of introduction. And now if I could turn it over to Ms. Bawa just for a discussion there, I would, I'm intending for us to go through the, that beginning of a markup chart. Maybe before we go to that, are there any other questions about what I've just said?
Any questions for Mr. Shields? All right. Ms. Bawa, you ready?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Charter, members of the council. In response to the first question that was put by council to look for options to fund some of the priorities that were identified, three of those specifically, neighborhood traffic calming, spot improvements. So looking at the options we have so far, we, as options, if we were to retain the library fines, which were as part of the city manager's proposal, proposed for elimination, could yield a possible revenue of $35,000. Secondly, the budget includes a 1% hotel tax that is dedicated for downtown improvements, which was adjusted to $62,000. So we are, those are a couple of options together, come close to $100,000. On the neighborhood traffic calming, I would like to elaborate a little bit, little bit more on Mr. Shields' comment about the WAMADA funding, the CARES, with a caveat that the first phase of funding that we know of has attachment to it that would be used for COVID-related expenses, which could possibly apply towards our service that Metro couldn't fund, for 3G service that we couldn't get the I-66 connector funding for. So however, we do not have any confirmation or information yet that other funding could be used towards subsidy for WAMADA. There are discussions going on, and we hope to get more clarity in the days and the weeks coming up. And as part of the capital improvement program that we bring to you in late May or first week of June, we hope to incorporate those, those numbers. The other thing I would like to also remind everyone that just earlier on in the meeting, we saw the NVTA projections on sales tax, and they are significantly down, just like all jurisdictions, and we are also projecting our revenues, their fiscal year 20 revenues are 33%, or they're down. So we may have projects even in our current approved CIP that we may not be able to fund with the NVTA funding going down. So there, there are a lot of adjustments that need to happen. We will bring back, and certainly $100,000 for NTC is going to be a priority in coming up with funding options with any available funding that gets freed up with the WAMADA subsidy help. The second one was a direction from council to look for options to fund the assistant registrar position that would help with the November elections and in general, and a body in the registrar's office. So at this point, the full position would cost $70,000. We are proposing that if we could start with half a position for assistant registrar, which would be funded using, reducing their temporary budget by $20,000, and which was in the original proposed of March. So that was the proposal to reduce their temporary budget of $20,000 and use it towards their position. And we have And we have 20,000 of saving from a slightly more, we got the final numbers for the health insurance, and we applied those, that was in the Anthem Plan, and those we applied. So there is roughly 20,000 saving on that. So towards, together, that would fund half a position, FTE, as an assistant registrar. And we are also hopeful for a possibility of COVID-related funds for November election funding. The third funding request was to look for the gap of 45,000 between the demand and supply for the emergency rental assistance. So increase in these costs are certainly due to the COVID-19, and these eligible fundings would be eligible under the state and tribal assistance grants, the STAG grant for CARES Act. We do not know the amounts and allocations as of yet, but when those come out, we are almost certain that we would get, be eligible for some funding, and that would be COVID-related. One of the criterias listed in there is that these expenses are not previously budgeted. So we are proposing that at this point, we wait for the allocations that come to us during, through that act, and we will monitor this and bring back to council all these items along with any other funding gaps that we identify as part of the first report that we bring to council in September, October. That is the options for funding council requests from last Monday. I will stop there and see if anybody has questions.
All right, does anyone have questions? How, how much is your presentation? How long? I don't know whether to stop.
I'm done.
That's the entirety of your presentation?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're done, you're not stopping there, you're just stopped. Okay, so let's go on and see if folks have comments or questions about that. I also do want the city clerk shortly to read any public comments we've received to this date, and I'm going to read the email address once again, if anyone wants to make comment as to the budget and tax rate. That email address is cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. Again, cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov, and you are welcome to send an email right now, and it will be read very soon on the air for us. So, but let's go back to any questions or comments. Are there any questions or comments from council?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor, question?
Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly.
Ms. Bawa, the first line there, the funding request and the funding options, so what you're proposing is, is to leave the library fines in place, not remove them, and then are we increasing the amount of the hotel tax, or are we just taking the 1% hotel tax and putting that money towards traffic calming and spot improvements?
So yes to both, and I'll reword it. So that's correct, proposing that we would leave the library fines in place and be charging fines, continue to charge fines. And we would reprogram the downtown fund, funding the 1% hotel tax that is used currently towards downtown improvements. We would fund, use those funds for the neighborhood traffic calming. I do want to mention that a portion of that fund's coordinator position, which is 22,000 to be specific, so I will need to dig a little bit deeper to figure out an alternative for that 22,000. And we'll bring that, if this is what the council's direction is, then I'll, we'll dig for the other 22,000 somewhere else.
And have you, have you reduced the amount of the expected hotel tax based upon our current situation?
That's correct. It used to be 90,000, it's down to 62.
Okay. So I just wanted to say that I do not want to retain the library fines. One of the presentations I saw as a member of the library board was from Jenny Carroll, the library director, talking about the reasons why we should get rid of library fines, and it was a really compelling presentation. And I assume that had we had a normal budget process, she would have been able to give that presentation to all of council. But I'll give you a real quick description of what I remember, and maybe if Mr. Shields or Ms. Messer, or Ms. Bawa can add to that. Library fines, the expense of levying library fines is twice as much as what we get back from library fines, and those who pay library fines disproportionately are those with lower incomes. So it's one of those things that always lands on the people who have the least amount of money. They said that many libraries in our area are reducing, getting rid of library fines completely. There'll still be reminders, and people will still be expected to return their books. And if someone loses a book, they will still have to pay for the book that they've lost. So if they don't return it ever, there will be a fee for that. But the actual levying of library fines is becoming a thing as we look at equity in our society, is one of those things that should be gotten rid of. So I would really request that we leave that in the budget.
Other comments, questions?
Sure, I've got a few.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep. So Karen White, I appreciate you guys drilling into these and trying to find areas where we can plug requests. I'm still just really disappointed, one, that I have to continue to harp on this, but two, the result as it relates to the funding requests for traffic calming and spot improvements, kind of the sad irony of, of looking at this chart is that even a vast majority of those allocated funds for our projects that we've had to fill for overspending or over-budget projects, or for buildings that our citizens can't even use right now, and in some cases may have to use them in drastically different ways coming out of this. However, the one area which happens to be the smallest piece of the budget that some folks have expressed concern over also happens to be one of the areas that we heard the most vocal outcry from the community leading up to this, COVID crisis or not. And it also happens to be, when it comes to sidewalks, spot improvements for roads, the one amenity in the city that folks have actually been able to use and have gotten some enjoyment out of as we've all been quarantined. The number of people walking on streets and sidewalks has increased exponentially because it's really the one safe haven that folks have to get some use out of an amenity and get maybe some additional headspace from all of this. So I would ask again that we dig a little bit deeper and figure out how we're going to come up with a measly $200,000 that, one, doesn't force us to make it an either-or, which I find a bit troubling. But to put that money back in the budget, which in my opinion is not enough to begin with, with everything that we need done in the city, and I feel that we can find it, and we've got $100 million budget, we can come up with a couple $100,000 to fix some issues that folks have been begging for, and to fix and improve amenities that people have actually been able to use during this crisis and which will not go away once we come out of it. So again, I would ask please for us to be able to find that $200,000 to fill that small part of the budget.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lichtenhouse. Who was next? I'm sorry, it was unclear, who wanted to speak next?
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder.
Sure, of course.
Sure.
Yeah, please.
So first of all, a question to management. I'd like a calculation of the revenue loss per day of the shutdown, and a cost for not participating in the governor's proposed very, as you quite rightly said, conservative restarting. So I'd like a cost per day of delaying, beginning to reopen as the governor has proposed for other parts of the state. Second thing is, I want to commend Cindy. Cindy and I have been working very hard on the WAMADA issues, and we're going to keep working them really hard. There have been a series of public meetings and meetings with the staff and regional staff. So you have our commitment to try to come up with as much in terms of revenue as we possibly can to meet, to meet the desires. I also want to make the point that I think we should keep the tax rate even, we should not consider a tax rate increase, certainly on our, our citizens, and I think not tapping into reserves at this point is a really good idea. I fear that, that the shutdown in one form or another, for whatever reason, may continue. Each day, the costs mount, and we may be facing the wrong kind of adjustment to make in the fall. I hope not, but that's highly likely. We may need those reserves in the future. So I agree with the city manager not tapping into reserves. In terms of neighborhood traffic calming, I fully support additional funds for that, and I hope that we can work the metro issues to free up that money. I do believe the library fines ought to be maintained. Library is a free charge. If you keep a book out or another asset, you're, you're preventing someone else of our citizens to having access to that. So I view it as a matter of fairness that we maintain those fines. And the, another possible place to look for the neighborhood traffic calming funding, if we have to, and we know it is delaying, but my question about potentially doing some neighborhood traffic calming and delaying some of the paving. Oftentimes in crises like this, need to delay longer-term projects. So I'm not suggesting it's necessarily the way to go, but if all else fails, and we're not able to find neighborhood traffic calming elsewhere, the question, what would be the impact of delaying some of the paving in favor of the immediate spot safety improvements that I think our citizens want even more than, than other transportation investments? So those are, those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Who else has got comments or questions or requests right now?
Mayor, I do.
All right, Ms. Hardy?
So I'll start with actually where Mr. Snyder left off. So I actually share some of those thoughts as well. So I would not support using the downtown improvements. I think as we think about economic recovery, I want to make sure that we are thinking about how to support the downtown and other businesses to invite people back. And so I think that would be rating kind of the wrong bucket of money. So I would ask the city manager to look for other options. On this note about reducing the paving budget, so as people's behaviors are changing and obviously using cars less, are there opportunities to think about using money from those sources? So paving could be a natural source, because if there's less car wear and tear in the roads, then maybe that means we don't need as big paving budget for this coming year. On traffic calming in general and spot improvements, and I guess it falls in this bucket of kind of LED lights, I think the, there's obviously a payback period by moving to LED lights. And so have we kind of accounted for, obviously, the benefit we'd see on the other side by making that small investment upfront?
We, we did. The estimated savings of converting our streetlights to LED is an annual reduction in electricity bill of over $40,000 per year. Maybe ask Ms. Bawa to confirm that number, but that was my memory of our calculation at the time of initially recommending that we do the 180, 180,000 for LED conversion in year one, and then have that money get to sidewalks in year two, 40,000 per year.
Okay. So I realize that we're kind of asking for our cake and eating it too, but I just want to make sure that we're thinking about kind of obviously long-term payback benefits, a lot of these things, I think, neighborhood traffic calming, sidewalks, those are all investments that we think are important, both for vitality and safety, but also eventually economic recovery for the city. So hopefully we can find another source. On small business relief, so going back to the beginning part of this conversation around the rules that the treasury sets, I know right now the micro grant program we've started is funded with EDA funds. Do we know the rules well enough that, would those allow for small business recovery or grants? Those covered as well? CARES money cover that?
I think they are, but we do need to be real crystal clear about that before we expanded the program, thinking that we're, it was, that it would be reimbursable. Fairfax County, just as an example, they got their allocation directly from the federal government, and I believe they are using a portion of their CARES money to, for grants to local businesses. One other thing that I meant to mention during my report, just as a status report, as of this morning at 9:00 a.m., we, the city had received 91 applications for the EDAs grant program, and the deadline is Friday, May 15th. Thank you.
That's good news. So I guess let's get clear on those rules, because if that CARES money can go towards small businesses, I think it's worth sharing with the EDA whether we want to expand that program, because we can help more businesses or help them with more money, that they have a better chance of surviving this too. So a more general question. So I know that our rule for things in the CIP are things that are over 150,000 and over five years of useful life. Obviously LEDs should last long, as long as that, as do sidewalks and most other traffic calming things. As a general kind of policy, why aren't all these projects funded out of the CIP?
So the short answer is they are. And so what the budget question for you is, is an expenditure from pay-as-you-go dollars to the CIP. And so that's really what the issue is before the council right now.
And are we paying, but we're paying for the cash and not bonding them?
That is correct, yes.
So is there an opportunity to think about short-term bonds to pay for these projects as many other jurisdictions do? Given how low interest rates are right now?
We could have that discussion in this, in this budget. We have tried to, in, in the revised budget, we have knocked out the small amount of debt that was in the May 19th budget, with the, with the exception of the fleet replacement program. That's something that we're trying to do on a regular basis. So that's the only debt that is currently in this revised post-COVID budget that's before you.
I assume that's with five-year debt and not like 20-year debt we do for big buildings, right?
That's correct. The fleet is a five-year, five-year debt.
With the debt that we just issued recently, we are, for the years, fiscal year '21 and '22, we are going to be very close to 15% threshold for debt service to expenditure. So that's the reason we are being very cognizant of the amount of debt we want to issue in this, in the two, three-year window.
Perhaps for the next Q and A, I'd love to know kind of where interest rates are for that five-year debt.
Okay, we'll provide that. Great, thank you.
Are you done, Ms. Hardy? Or you still got other ones?
I am.
Okay. So other folks with other questions or comments?
May I ask a couple?
Of course.
Thank you. So I just wanted to, since we're being asked to weigh in here, I would say the assistant registrar approach that you outlined is good. After finding a cure to the COVID-19, I think the second most important thing for the city, state, and country is running a highly participatory and safe November election. So if having an assistant registrar position enables us to do that, I'm for that, and I'm for the approach of funding the position as indicated. The emergency rental assistance seems pretty obvious. We, we don't need to do anything there. We just hope that the money comes in from the feds and that we, you know, can account for the need that we have, which is going to be there, we're very sure. The metro, the $190,000, is that, you know, I understand that to be a sum of money that we would be to the good in terms of what we would get from metro, or does that reduce our obligation to what we have to pay them? How does that money come to us?
It's the reduction in expenditures that would otherwise be going to WAMADA. But let me allow Cindy or Karen to add more to that.
For the, the context from WAMADA, let me add, and then Karen could speak to the budgeting piece. The federal transit money that came to WAMADA is 876 million. The first amount of money that allocated had to go to assist transit operators to stop them from laying off employees as the core, and it, WAMADA has already allocated 500 million. And WAMADA has already allocated 500 million of that. Of that, because it was population calculated, the city is eligible for 195,000. That has to help offset transit operations, not revenue offset or operating subsidy. That's the funding that Ms. Bawa was speaking to that would cover the 3T operating cost bills we're getting from WAMADA while we can't draw down the 66 money because the system is not running due to COVID. The additional tranche that is left to be allocated, we learned just today, will be in an amount of approximately 190,000. So our total would be 385. That money in the original broad guidance was to assist with offsetting our operating subsidy that we owe to WAMADA. That is not allocated by the WAMADA board yet. We're still working it. I'll be on a WAMADA staff call tomorrow, and we need to confirm the FTA guidance for that usage. That's where Ms. Bawa was being cautious in our allocation of that dollar amount for use. The way we would receive that is a credit on, for both of these, we receive it as a credit on our first quarter FY '21 bill. Now, if those are confirmed in time, then the question is, how can we use that? Because it would reduce the liability we've already committed to WAMADA with local money and 30% money. That's the budgeting piece that Ms. Bawa was speaking to, complicated with the fact that we're looking at our 30% revenues going down and making sure we're not overestimating them in the CIP. So there is WAMADA federal relief transit money available, allocated to the city, but it also has the guidelines we need to ensure we're complying with. And with that, I'll pass the baton back to Ms. Bawa to add any additional information.
So in the meantime, let me just, if I could interrupt, looks like Letty's had some technical difficulties. So just, just to make note of that, she may be trying to join us even by telephone. So maybe we can get some technical assistance, even just a phone number.
I can try to call her.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. So Ms. Bawa, go ahead.
So that's correct. The money will flow to us and will reduce our subsidy that we have to pay towards metro bill. So it'll be, the distribution would be done through NVTC, and our commitment for the first quarter and thereafter would be reduced after determining how much of it goes through, towards the 3T operations for current year.
Okay. Well, lavish praise to all of you who are rooting around in the WAMADA treasure chest to try to find, you know, money that's to our advantage, number one. Number two, it's less important that I understand every jot and tittle of what you've just said than, than is, is there a pathway to some of this money helping us allocate money offsetting for neighborhood traffic calming? With the argument that, you know, as Mr. Littenhouse said, one of the effects of the virus times is that more people are out on the street walking and needing sidewalks and safe crossings in neighborhoods, and neighborhoods are seeing more speeding because of the less volume and so forth. I mean, it seems to me you could make a very compelling case. All you got to do is walk outside your house and see it every day that, you know, because of virus times, we are, you know, in need of more measures, enforcement and concrete measures, literally, in the area of neighborhood traffic calming in order to respond to the new environment. So that's my speech. I mean, I'm, I want to obviously not do anything that isn't proper, but seems to me like if you can free up some money from the WAMADA account, it's very plausible to purpose it into neighborhood traffic calming and spot improvements that improve pedestrian and traffic safety.
And one thing I would just note that this WAMADA information was very late developing. And so we put this chart together without really fully understanding that dimension to it. So we'll keep working the issue. I did want to make that clarification.
Yeah, that's correct. The information came from WAMADA at 2:00 PM this afternoon, and my follow-up staff meeting will be tomorrow.
All right. Well, thank you, and urge you to keep working in that area. And again, thanks to those of you who are trying to find money in the nooks and crannies, but it really seems like a legitimate expense to me if, if we are looking for virus connections to changes that we need to make in our budget. This is, although it's been on the books, something we've been trying to do, it's even more urgent to do it now.
If I may add a little piece of detail, for the first phase of WAMADA funding, the COVID-related expenses, however eligible, however they're paying, would cover local transit service. So it's for cities and counties that are operating their service. They made an exception for us since we do get a grant for 3T and we do not have our own local transit. It was not just an overall COVID-related expenses to do with streets and sidewalks. It's just for local transit. But today we just found out about the second phase of funding, and the funding has doubled from 195 to 385 now. So we, but we do not know any details on, on the eligibility, what it all could be used for. If it could just apply for revenue loss and it could apply to our subsidy, that would be ideal. We're trying to dig into that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, while we're waiting, could, could you read any comments we've read, you've received as to the budget?
Yes. These are the public hearing comments. The following wrote to oppose cutting any traffic calming funds from the proposed budget. Jessica Hagenbart of Marshall Street, Ken York, 102 Delaney Place, Susan Lane, 121 West Marshall Street, Mark Kasher, Keith Simpson, and Aaron and Christopher Corvez of 106 Delaney Place. The electoral board provided a letter asking for the assistant registrar position to remain in the budget in light of the increased demand from mail-in voting. And those are our comments.
All right. Thank you for those. And again, our public is welcome to comment now or at subsequent meetings on the budget. And that email once again is cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. Were there additional comments, questions, or requests from city council?
Mr. Mayor, I do have some.
Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly.
One actually is related to the comments from the individuals on Marshall Street and Delaney Place. And I replied to some of those. I don't know that I've, well, I have replied to a few of them. That neighborhood is the Greenway Downs neighborhood, and I just want to confirm that, as was in Mr. Shields' memo earlier, the Greenway Downs traffic calming project is going to take place because it is federally funded and that grant should start in July.
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay. So to reply to those neighbors and say that their concerns are being taken care of is a reasonable thing to do. The second question I have also relates to traffic calming because I do agree that it's very important that we keep our, keep our streets safe and allow people to walk and allow walking and biking in a way that will keep our, as we're trying to keep our community safe. Very important. But as I'm looking at the memo from Mr. Shields, I'm looking at line like 136 where he's talking about the Great Falls-Little Falls project, which is one of the first ones that would be funded if funding becomes available. And I have raised concerns about this several times in the past, and that is the community involvement in this project seems to be lacking. And this line 136 says that there's going to be a letter and a meeting in mid-May, mid to late May, to make up for a meeting in March that was canceled. But we're already on March 11, May 11. And I've been looking on the website during this meeting to try to find notification of that meeting. I don't see anything there. So I'm just wondering, what's the process here?
Ms. Connolly, I'd be glad to respond to that.
Thanks.
From the earlier questions back in the March time, we did confirm all who was in the scope and some of the individual residents who felt hadn't been included. I think part of the problem was that we've had a three-year lag due to funding. So the current process is since we canceled the March meeting, we had to work through, waiting until virtually we could have the meeting, which we have now authority. We have the Skype for Business process set up and actually finalized it with IT today. So Mr. Sykes is finishing the letter that will be mailed to every resident, US Postal Mail, who's in the scope area for the original petitions for both Great Falls and Little Falls when they were merged together as one project.
Where can we find the scope? Because as I looked at the website and I saw the lines, but I don't see exactly where the scope is.
That full level of detail is not posted on the website. We do have the petition that was originally mailed in the scope, and I can make that available to council. The meeting we hope to hold on May 21st at 3:00 PM, now that we have the technical piece put together, Mr. Sykes has coordinated this with the Small Working Group. We will have video, audio through Skype, and a call-in for those who may not have computer available so that everybody could participate. In the mailing, everybody will get a refresher of the project description and the graphics and the current design. So they'll have physical copies mailed to them. We will have them through Skype presented as well. In that mailing will include a postcard, which is the ballot vote if they support it or not, as required by the adopted guidelines. Those will then come in back to Mr. Sykes, and we'd be able to calculate if the percentage required was achieved by adopted guidelines and work back with the working group. Of course, if we don't get enough ballots back, we'll do some follow-up with residents during this challenging time. And we have a fair amount of emails, but we're not relying on that for the formal mailing. This project has been in the queue for a very long time. Some other projects were reprioritized by council in the CACT. That's why this one will be the first one next in queue to be worked. It is a larger cost project than as described in the questions and answer memos where we can do some of the smaller signage and administrative stuff.
So the concerns I'm hearing from the neighbors who live on Shadow Walk are that they weren't included in the original scope, that they're right around the corner and they should be. So I want to make sure Shadow Walk is included in the scope or at least gets notification.
They're on the petition and the mailing, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the other concern, and again, I haven't really looked at this, so I'm just speaking from what I've heard, is that this project itself is a $240,000 project, a lot of which is because people are concerned about the bus stop. And over the last 15 years, that bus stop has changed many times. So the question I got from someone is, are we really going to spend $240,000 to widen a sidewalk when we could actually just ask the schools to move the bus stop? And again, I don't know the whole scope of this project, but it seems like there are some concerns from people who have lived there a long time that haven't been included. So I just want to make sure that whenever that meeting is, that those concerns are heard, and that as we're prioritizing budget spending, we really take a look at, is this something that is needed? Because it's an expensive project. $240,000 is what we're trying to find somewhere else.
Yes, ma'am. And I, when the earlier came up, I did check the Shadow Walk addresses, and we'll make sure they're on the full list when it's mailed. The project is more than just bus stops. That is an important piece, but it does add sidewalk, crosswalks, and traffic calming message, methods to improve overall walkability in that Little Falls, Great Falls, and pedestrian safety. But we do encourage, and we'll do a lot of messaging once we're able to mail the letters to make sure everybody have the opportunity to participate.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm sure we'll hear more.
All right. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Once again, I'm going to call for a public comment. I'm going to do it together, Ms. City Attorney. If there are any comments or questions on TO 2005 or and/or TO 2007, please send in your comments now to cityclerk@fallschurchva.gov. Are there other comments from council? I've got a couple if no one else does. If anyone else does, feel free to go ahead. All right. I'll go ahead with just a few. One, as relates to the library, I think half of that money comes from my family, the $35,000 in fines. So it's probably be a windfall and probably should disclose that to everyone that we paid $18,000 in fines last year. But on a serious note, I would say, as to Ms. Connolly's point, if it costs more money to, to collect the fines than we receive in the fines, I guess that's something I'd like to know about. And if that's the case, maybe we should just stop the fines and cut the library's budget on an equal amount if in fact it costs them more to do than to collect the fines. So I guess I'm wondering if we could try to figure that out. If it doesn't cost more, then I guess I would say, I do think it's, it's probably, given all the choices we have, to me, a reasonable choice to keep them on. But I think the point's well taken. If in fact it costs a fair piece more than we collect, I'd at least like to know that. So maybe city manager could just confirm what the cost of collection are and whether in fact it's a net negative or net positive. Secondly, I do have concerns about rating the downtown improvement budget. I do think that's important for all sorts of reasons. Probably on a per-square or linear foot of sidewalks and the like, we probably walk more downtown than in other parts of the city. And it is keyed our tax base and for us to pay the bills, keep the lights on. So I would be hesitant to, to rating that, that pot of money. With respect to the election assistance, in my conversations with state representatives, I had the impression that it's, it's possible, if not likely, there would be state assistance as relates to these elections. And I probably just don't recall it correctly. Mr. Shields, do you have any more insight on that? Or can you try to get some more insight on where that lies now, state assistance for our coming elections, either federal or state?
We, we don't have all the information on it. There's two ways it could go. Either there's going to be direct assistance that's allocated for running our elections in the COVID environment, or the other way is that this is a, you know, unbudgeted expenditure, and it is an emergency, having to deal with all these mail-in ballots, and that that could be a justification. And so that is one of the reasons why we're not fully funding it, that for the period of December, through December 31st, the first half of the year, we would fund this position. We will certainly try to, using CARES funding, and this dollar amount really is to carry it through the rest of the fiscal, for the rest of the fiscal year. So that was part of our thinking in this dollar amount to provide this position.
Okay. So when you say the rest of the fiscal year, are you talking about beyond November?
Yeah, beyond December 31st. That's right.
So beyond the election. So, I mean, I can see the need for this particular election because there probably will be a lot of weird things going on with a ton of mail-in ballots or extra health precautions. And I understand the registrar's insistence in the past about wanting this position. It seems to me like the real hump we're trying to get over is November. So I guess I would just throw that out. That, that seems to me is the big thing we're dealing with. It may be a longer-term problem as well. But anyway, then also I guess I would add, I feel that preserving the reserves at this point is very prudent. And what I would say that maybe is a bit different than some of our other localities in the area, to my mind, our reserves are for two points, are for two areas. One is just a rainy day fund like everyone else has, but also we have a special circumstance, which is our school. And our school, as everyone knows, is very expensive. And we've kind of treated our two main issues for, for reserves as one. And the reality is they both, they both hit at the same time. In other words, we may need the rainy day fund for economic downturn, and the economic downturn in turn may impact our bill. downturn in turn may impact our ability to do economic downturn, economic development at the school site, which would be kind of a double whammy on our reserves. And so I think I would exercise great caution with dipping into our reserves at this point or the immediate future. Next, I would also agree with the others that this is a year to keep our tax rate the same. I think you probably say it about every year, but I think particularly this year. And then lastly, I would just note that I know a lot of folks have mentioned traffic calming, and I'm a big fan of walking and pedestrian safety. And so if there are metro savings, I would suggest that's probably, if they're available to be used elsewhere, I would suggest that's a good place that they can be used. And if not, that we ought to continue to scour our books to try to find some additional money for traffic calming and pedestrian safety. With that, I think that's about all I've got. Does anyone else have any further comments about the budget? Or has any comments come in, Madam Clerk, while I've been blabbering on?
I just checked one last time, and I think you can probably close the public hearing.
All right. It is closed.
Yep.
Mayor, I think you're on mute.
Oh, sorry. So my apologies. So is there any further questions or comments as to the budget before we end this hearing?
Mr. Mayor, we're not having a separate discussion on the tax rate ordinance, correct?
Well, we've sort of had it. If you'd like, we can. I made my comments just a moment ago, but you're welcome to make additional comments about it.
I thought we were going to have a separate conversation. I just want to say that, no, it's okay. I just, on the record, want to say that I fully support keeping our tax rate flat, not increasing it. I don't think that's necessary, and our citizens should bear that burden. So I do agree with keeping that tax rate flat.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions or requests as relates to the budget? Are we ready to end this portion of our conversation tonight? All right, let's go ahead then unless there's anything else and move on to... So this is a second reading. It shows is a second reading. This isn't a second reading just yet, is it?
It's a second reading or item requiring a public hearing. So this is the public hearing, and the second reading will be on May 26th.
Yeah. Agenda as a second reading. It's not.
Today was just for public hearing, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. So is there any business not on the agenda that anyone would like to discuss? Any standing regional committee reports, council liaison reports, or any council comments people would like to make prior to us adjourned?
Could I make one comment?
Yes, of course.
Mostly to the city manager. So on behalf of Mr. Littenhouse and Ms. Hardy on the Economic Development Committee with me, our normally scheduled meeting would be May 28th, I think. So between now and maybe next Monday's council meeting, maybe you could give us some guidance on what you think about where things stand with the inside project and with the Southwest and West Broad parcel, and anything else that we might need or want to discuss at a May 28th meeting. Because if we're going to have that meeting, we should make sure to give staff ample time to get us, you know, mic'd up for it. Thanks.
And I would need at least a week to get that together, so that would be good to know.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, final words before we adjourn?
I had one, a quick request.
Yes, Ms. Hardy.
So I know that our boards and commissions, some of them are starting to meet. So thank you to Ms. Heath and the rest of staff for getting that on the books. Do we have a schedule of who's starting to meet? So I know Housing Commission's meeting tomorrow night, and I think I saw a notice that Library is meeting as well. Are they all starting back up or kind of on a reduced schedule?
I don't know if the city attorney wants to... We are taking requests, but they're being reviewed by the city attorney.
Yeah, we're trying to only have those meetings where there's an action that needs to be taken that's either an action by the entity or some recommendation on something that's coming up before council. So what we've asked is that the boards and commissions contact clerk's office, let us know what it is they need to meet about, and then we're trying to get them scheduled and set up on that basis. But to the extent that we've asked that those entities that don't have a specific matter coming up that's going to be before council, that they wait and see if they can end up meeting at a time where they can have a fully, where they can have a physical quorum present ultimately. But as matters come up that need to be done, we are working with the groups and the boards and commissions to get their meetings set up. So I don't know if the, Celeste, I don't know if you have created an ongoing schedule of when those things are going to be, because I think a lot of them are working through you.
Well, they'll be on the website calendar, and most of them are posted now. We have Planning Commission is meeting, Board of Zoning Appeals, the Library Board, Housing Commission is meeting, and then we have a request, I believe, from the ESC that we're working on.
And the Retirement, and the Retirement Board.
Oh, the Retirement Board, I'm sorry. That one's all set to go too. So they're all, they will be posted on the web calendar. We are just, we got through the EDC. We're working, you know, the Housing Commission's the next one. We learn something every time, so we try to get the postings up as quickly as we can. But that will be, it'll be the same place. They'll be posted on, our posting board is now the door of City Hall, so there will be paper notices on the board as required, which is the door. So we're just moving along meeting by meeting. But you'll be able to see them, and you'll be able to attend via Skype.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments before we adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, Dave Snyder, just a request that, without objection, the mayor and whoever else wants to join in a letter supporting our projects before NVTA, perhaps making the argument, and I've heard several council members make it tonight, and it's a good one, that particularly in an environment where people are walking more, that these kinds of projects are relevant. They've always been relevant, but are even more relevant now. So...
Good idea.
Mr. Snyder, do you think someone should testify at the meeting on Thursday?
Yeah.
As well as send a letter?
It's a virtual meeting, and yes, I think there is an opportunity for public input. And I know Councilmember Hardy has worked on getting support. So yeah, if they can or submit emails or some sort of communication would be helpful, I think, from the public.
Okay. From what I understand, the deadline for public sending things in is the 24th of May?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay.
But they are taking public statements, again, virtually at the Thursday night meeting.
And as council will recall, when we had our grant application in for the West End, the 15.7 million, I think there was over 300 email comments that came in, and we were the locality in grant application with the highest number. And that did make a difference in NVTA's review. It was very visible in addition to public comments. And for the letter that Councilman Snyder mentioned, Karen and I will be glad to follow up and draft something that can be submitted for the public hearing this Thursday.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
I think the EDA Chair and Vice Chair has sent letters, I think as it relates to economic development as well as CACT. And I think all the PTAs have engaged their bodies because obviously it's a popular school rep, so hopefully people are getting the word out.
Yeah, CBC XCOM authorized the letter at their last meeting, too.
All right. Anything else before we adjourn?
Great job, you all. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, listen, thank you to all of you and to our first responders and doctors and nurses. Everybody's doing a great job together, so let's hang in there. All right. Unless there's anything else, why don't we go ahead and adjourn?
Thank you, council.
Thank you. We're adjourned.